...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no bounds.
Is there a motion for the media's testimony?
I so move.
A second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the debate by Sengay.
I.
And the judge is on her way?
She should be. I just emailed again to see if she was.
Okay. Do we want to do resolutions?
Sure. Move to approve the Tuesday, November 3, 2015 bills. ACH payments as presented by the county auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
A second to motion.
We'll call please, Amy.
Vicki?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Move to approve the Tuesday, November 3, 2015 journal vouchers as presented by the county auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
A second.
Any further discussion? We'll call please.
Vicki?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Move to approve the Tuesday, November 3, 2015 denannals certification as presented by the county auditor.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
I.
You seem to keep us hanging.
I.
And the discussion areas, Brad Crumis is a writer or a writer?
You know, in my opinion on this, if he's willing to do all the work, and she seems to be, I mean, to me initially, I thought it was kind of overwhelming that maybe it'll be a good thing, because obviously we'll get more money for them, so if he's willing to do this countywide, and he has a lot of energy, that's for sure.
Evidently he must.
He's like that Energizer bunny.
I think it's really important, just so it's clear to everyone, is voluntary.
Oh, right.
Yes, no, I don't want to step on anyone.
No, I think that's been a problem in the past. People have felt strong-armed on that, and that's really changed over the years.
Well, I hope it has.
Well, I hope so, too.
No, because people do have, some people like to give to other.
Sure.
And that is.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that certainly is understandable, so if we can stress that with Brad, because I think when Brad takes on something, he's.
Oh, yeah.
Right there, he's going to get it done. Yep, and that's good for you that way, but, all right. Excuse me.
Did you guys want to, Brad has asked that you do the incentive countywide.
Right, that's what we just said.
I mean, but you're okay with that?
Yes.
Not just for the.
As long as he's heading it up and doing it. I mean, I don't think he's really asking us to do anything, is he? I mean, I didn't.
Pay for it?
Well, when you say countywide, the department, I think that gets the most, and obviously they're going to have a lunch. We haven't really decided on what the prize is going to be.
Oh, I don't want to, I'm not going to do that.
No, we're not going to pay for it. The department is. Whoever wins the contest or what, that's what he's wanting to do.
The department is?
The department that wins, that, and that was my understanding.
Well, one, the proposal, which I think is a proposal I made in the meeting that we had, was that any department where there's participant, that gets the highest participation rate.
Okay, not money wise, or something?
Not money, but for instance, say there's three people in a department, all three give, that's 100 percent. If there's 250 in the department and half of them give, that's 50 percent.
So, but for the percentages, I thought commissioners could provide some kind of incentive. Well, I, yeah. It could be very small, like a pizza. Or if you have 250 people and you're going to give them a pizza.
Just more than one pizza.
Yeah. I'm just, unfortunately, and I can share with you later, I'm, I'm just not going to support that. I just have my reservations.
I didn't understand the commission. I thought initially you had offered it just to our departments.
Well, to me only, you know, if it's a contest, any one is going to win, like there could be a first prize, second and third maybe, but it's not going to be, chances are very good that it's not going to be 250 people to buy a pizza for.
Well, but I would, of course, if I'm not doing it, it's up to the two of you. I would think it would be more under the purview of the departments and of the commissioners, but if you want to extend it to the whole county, that's certainly, but I just don't care about participating under those circumstances. And I can share with you later.
Sure, sure.
Well, gee, the two of us want to do it?
Does this mean the whole county's participating and the department with the highest percentage of participation? We are going to provide lunch, is that what we're saying?
I didn't think lunch, but I thought, well, maybe a pizza or something. But whatever, I mean, I don't think it would cost a lot of money.
It's almost.
I mean, we would do it personally, I think. We wouldn't do it with county money.
Oh, no.
Oh, no.
Oh, gosh, no.
Yeah.
Okay, let, let me think about that.
I think Brad will talk to you more about it.
Okay, yeah, maybe we're not understanding.
Yeah.
Sure.
All right, so that's on hold until Brian, I'm sorry, Brad.
Yes.
When something talks.
Right.
About it. Oh, good, Brian Crock. Excuse me. Do we have one of these things in your throat and you just want to get rid of it pretty camp?
Can we just bring this back?
So, this.
There's a couple more of them.
Right, we've had others.
We'll bring it back.
So, this is. That's good. I'm glad we're getting interest.
Okay, this, this third one, is that what we're on now?
Yeah.
Media request for the United Way. You didn't seem to think that was a problem, right, Maureen?
Well, I.
You answered it back.
I didn't think it was.
No, I mean, I'm not saying it is. I just wasn't sure.
Yeah. Say that again.
Kathleen, what did you think of Brad?
I don't see any problem in doing it on social media.
Okay.
I mean, it's just voluntary.
Right.
Right, as long as he stresses that.
Well, Ryan had emailed us and just wanted to make sure that it was okay.
Right, right. He, that was though to put it on Portage Preparers.
Right.
Not just on the website.
Right.
I mean, you're okay with Portage Preparers?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Excuse me. I'm not very focused. Why am I?
This, the discussion's four.
I have one.
Good news is we've got the money.
Got 300,000, right?
The bad news is not allowed the abandonment of an STS in connection, San Antonio, on the date.
So, what are they allowed for?
See, I was, I didn't really quite, you know, when we get into these sewers and this terminology and everything, I'm not quite sure. I mean, I guess it is what it is. This is just.
Well, how does, how do they propose to?
To use that money?
Right.
I don't know.
For forgiveness of the principal for the loan, for the repair, and the bad news is that they can't use it to eliminate the public health nuisance or the administrative costs. So, it's how, it can be applied towards the principal loan, but it can't be used for other purposes.
So, what, what ramifications does that have for the general public? What would benefit the public?
Shall we sit down or no?
Yes.
We can email that one.
How do we do that? I wouldn't know how it's going to benefit the public.
It gives them a reduction in the cost.
The cost, but you can't use it for the, you can't use it for the principal loan.
We can ask Mary Helen.
But Todd, why don't you?
I feel honored to share my birthday with you today.
Oh, yes, today, I love your birthday, Lord.
I'm election day baby.
Ooh, yes.
Joe Gillette, his 80th birthday is today.
Is it, really?
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah. He looks good.
If you'd known, we would have had.
My staff had a big breakfast. They're wearing grays all day.
Okay, did you get breakfast cake for breakfast?
Everything, bagels, all kinds of stuff.
All right, then, she's full of energy.
Okay. How would you like to proceed? Judge, would you like to just present to you?
I'm going to go over a few things. As you know, Judge Dory's been very ill, and she's been out over 55 days so far. We anticipate she'll be coming back sometime in December, but I'm asking for more money in our visiting judge fund. We haven't asked for that before, but I don't want her to feel that if she's feeling down and out that she has to come in. We have 3,000, I think, in our request. I'm going to ask for five, just to make sure that, and that's not a real significant amount, but that between me being able to cover her schedule and, you know, you don't know if I get, I might get sick, who knows, and, but just to make sure that she doesn't feel like she has to come in to work when she doesn't feel like it.
And it wouldn't be spent if we're needed.
No, exactly.
That's for this year, the rest of this year.
The rest of this year.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
Okay. And next year, I think we should bump it up to four, again, long-term, looking at, you know, her situation. I don't want her to feel like she has to come in if she's sick. The other thing is, we sent a request to bump up two of our employees, one being Pam Kresiak, who is our jury commissioner, because she is also assuming the duties of assignment commissioner on a part-time basis, helping Judge Dory's court, and also she has helped my court with doing the bailiff duties. She's very capable. She's done the Supreme Court report that usually the assignment commissioner does for Judge Dory, at least two months. And again, we have older employees that are taking vacation time and sick time, and we need somebody to be able to step in that's qualified, and so I'm asking that Pam move up to $41,600. That would be a $6,677 increase, again, because she's filling the duties of people that are being paid a lot more than her, and she, she does a great job. Also Tammy Kossler, who we got from the Cogga County Auditor's Department, we were lucky to steal her away. She is working for our mediator, and she runs the mediation department, but she also has learned how to do the budget, and she also has learned how to do the jury commissioner duties. So, she fills in all those areas when, like Pam was just on vacation last week. So, she ran the jury, she was doing mediation, and she was doing the budget.
Sounds like you have a lot of cross-training.
That's why I've been doing, trying to cross-train everybody, but these two in particular have taken on a great deal of work, and I think, I know that you said that we're going to review job worth, but I don't want to lose these two people. They're vital to our court. I mean, they're helping more, not, my, my end of the hall's pretty set, but the other end, because they're learning, and they're really pitched in and helped. So, I'm just asking that the two of them, that you honor our requests to increase their salaries.
Judge, are you amenable to having our HR department that we have left of it at least review those job descriptions in a sense of?
Maybe they need to be changed, to try to.
But their job descriptions have expanded now, and it's, see, the judges have always done that where they take on multi, you know.
Has that already been done, where the job description has changed?
No, no, they just take, they've assumed these duties.
I think that's what Maureen is suggesting.
Yes, I would have to rewrite it. The judges have never done that. We've never had the HR people look into ours, our personal staff.
Could, could we get a copy of the revised?
Sure, I can, I can devise one.
Or if you prefer not to, it just makes it, I think.
Sure.
Because that's more of a basis for which.
Again, it's apples and oranges, because the courts is so much different than anywhere else, you know, because everybody pitches it and helps whenever they can.
But if we rewrite the job description based on what she's actually doing, that will probably bring her in a different category, which would automatically then change her.
And that's fine. I'll, I can do that, because they're all cross-trained.
Excuse me.
Okay, that would be good, too.
Okay.
Now, just one more question about Pam. Is this just a temporary thing that she's doing, or will this be ongoing?
She's ongoing, being the, I guess you could call her the rotator.
Yeah.
Where she rotates in when Vicki's gone, she's going to do Vicki's assignment.
They'll be a floater.
More like a floater, but she's also doing her job, you know, and she also knows how to do the budget, so she, she knows how to do almost everything, and she bailed for me two weeks ago when we had jury trial. My bailiff was sick all week, and so she came in and did the bailiff job, so she does a little bit of everything, but she's helped Judge Dory's court immensely with their Supreme Court reports, which are really important, and she, you know, she helped them do theirs, so she actually did it for them.
And the same thing would be true of Tammy, where this is ongoing.
Right, right, because again, we have, even Judge Dory has older employees who have been in PERS in different ways, shapes and forms, and so they have a lot of vacation time, or they have a lot of sick time, so we need somebody to be able to fill in those spots. They're vital. So, I will devise a job description.
So, what were the amount for Pam and Tammy again?
Pam, we're asking for $41,600, which would be a $6,677 increase, and Tammy, $38,126, which would be a $4,388 increase.
$4,000 what?
$388 increase.
And this, I assume, would be for the next budget?
Next budget.
Yeah.
Do we want to do executive session for specifically discussing those, or do you want to stay in general?
We can go into exec.
Sure. I'll make a, I'll make a motion to go into executive session for personnel.
A second to motion.
Any further discussion? We'll call please, Amy.
Vicki?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes. It'll take us a minute to get off.
I should have said.
Oh, thank God. Yes, I'll make a motion to execute executive session.
Kathleen?
We'll call please.
Vicki?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
There action?
Are we back in?
You know, I thought we signed this, but we must have just said okay, huh? Is that what I did?
I know, we did, too, but.
Did we sign this letter that you guys were?
I sent it over in draft format.
Oh, maybe we're going to discuss it.
And then you guys tried to sign the letter.
Go ahead.
Real quick, we, we have extra money in the BF-14, and we'd like to move it to other projects in BF-14 that's, that could use it. We may have more money than there's the need for, but, but if we don't move it, we'll lose some.
Gosh, we'd love to hear that.
So, we don't want to lose it. So, so, I don't know, Lisa, you want to describe the projects, or you want me to describe the projects?
Basically, the Child Development Center is, is the place that had the, or activity that had money available. We had $17,800 left out of the $44,500 that was allocated for the project. So, what we are going to do is we are going to move $6,600 of that money into the Smith and Cowan concrete removal project, because we're going to do, we're doing some, the costs were a little higher than anticipated in, on some things, and we ran across a few things that will necessitate more money. The other activity is the Skills Community Center. We are installing or putting in a new parking lot. Those costs actually came in slightly lower than what we anticipated, but the pond, the work around the pond, the cleaning and treatment of it, and for taking out a lot of the debris that was, or the growth that was in the pond and around the pond, that is costing us more than what we anticipated, so what we are proposing to do is move a, move $11,200 into that line to cover those costs. And I've talked to the state, and they seem to be agreeable to it at this point. They just need your official signature.
So, we just need to do a journal entry and send them.
You could add it to, to these journal entries.
Yep.
Okay, Amy, can you just leave it here?
Well, it's probably in our thing to sign, right?
Do we have, do we have it with you?
I emailed it to Amy and asked her to print it out on letter.
Okay, do you want us to sign and give it to you now?
If you don't mind, I can then email it and then, or the original, to the state. You'll actually officially get an amendment form.
We don't have, we don't have a letter.
For you guys to sign.
I don't think we have one.
But we also have a public hearing scheduled, actually, for this proposed amendment, which actually, I recall, we set it up for some time in November, as part of the protocol for the amendment, so.
Okay, well, hopefully Amy can get it to us. We'll sign it, give it to you, and you'll be all set.
She's getting it now.
Okay.
Yes, we put in the letter.
You know, it's going to be 70 degrees today, tomorrow, and the next day.
Yes.
And the next day?
Yes, three days.
I want to, the celebrity reporters have to talk to you about that.
Oh, okay.
You asked for an invoice. I don't think we should do that. I don't think we should ask for one. You guys are such great sponsors.
Oh, okay, all right.
That's why I want you to. Oh, no, no, no. It was, we're talking about celebrity reporters on the side. There was an invoice for, they were talking about paying for additional people for the dinner they managed, and they were a sponsor already, and we didn't get an extra bill from NEOMED, so there was no reason to ask for an invoice, or ask for, and to pay for it.
Well, we were, all right.
You guys are.
That's very, very gracious and generous.
No, you guys were the gracious and generous. You're sponsors. You guys are awesome.
Well, but it was.
It was a good time.
It was very nice.
It was our idea, though, and I think just because it was the event acquired, they did such a beautiful job.
We ended up having probably about 20 no-shows, so they just filled their spaces.
Oh, all right. If that's the case, then we can.
Yeah, I'd rather have you guys be good sponsors than think that we're nickel-digging you guys.
And we will be. It's just that we, like, kind of hammered that home with the last year.
You did, you did, yeah.
I didn't see it in your eyes.
That's completely separate from RPC, where we, the celebrity reporters got money
Well, you know, I think that that will probably only get better, because last year was the first, and it was good, but this year was better, and I think.
Well, every year will get better.
I know we're waiting for letters to be signed, but yeah, so we have enough money saved for the dinner for next year, so what we want to do is we want to use the sponsorships for next year and do those, those community ice cream social reunites.
We have it.
And spread those around the campus.
Oh, so it is, isn't it?
And I already signed it.
That's true, Todd, because the people in their communities can just bait them.
We have it.
We also want to use, we also, and you're understanding me, so we still haven't talked about it yet, but I think also, you know, volunteer projects, too. Maybe help purchase materials for volunteer projects.
I think if you need, if they could do the ice cream social, kind of dovetail that at the end of the event where they were volunteering, so that people can have ice cream after.
Kind of a reward for that, yeah.
Well, and then people in the community that didn't volunteer could still come and.
Participate, yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
It's you.
I think you're done.
That's it?
Have a good one, guys.
Amy, I used all your Kleenexes, so you go, you might get some.
I've got some.
Oh.
I keep some. Everywhere I am, I keep some. Got them in my office.
Oh, thank you.
I've got bad sinuses. That's.
It's painful, isn't it?
Yeah.
Well, there are certain, this year evidently there's some spore, whatever it is.
Yeah.
I've never really under, well, paid attention to it until it affects you where you think.
Oh, yeah. Should we go ahead with our discussion?
Yes, okay. All right, I'm trying to think where we left off.
Number four?
Oh, was.
We were going to ask Mary Helen Smith for more information on that.
It pays out the principal, but, yeah. So, we, in essence, then, we have no benefit in the sense of being able to extend that to people who they're fixing up subject or tying in.
We're getting $300,000 to forgive the, for principal forgiveness, so we need more explanation, but what I think that means is that the total cost, whatever it is, be reduced by 300,000, and then the rest of it would be divided by the number of front footage, but I'm not sure, so we should find out.
Right, right, exactly. Which will make it slightly lower, but not a lot, no, no, but I agree. We need to know exactly what it'll, the parameters of it.
So, hope that for next time, right?
I, yes, why don't, we're going to get back to Mary Helen's ask for, to give us more detailed explanation.
Yes. And Amy, are you going to do that?
Who's going to do that? You're going to do that?
Somebody else.
Definitely here, lady.
All right. The next was from David Brode on the sale of the building in Columbia County, and having read that, it would seem that the money would go back into the general fund, which would be a good thing.
Right, it sounds like he needs to look at more papers, though, so I'm not sure what other papers there are. I mean.
Well, I think he's asking if there are any other agreements.
And did that owner, did we ever find out if he would buy it back for what we paid for it?
I don't know.
At the time, he said he would, but it was not in the formal agreement.
Oh, so it's just a verbal fact.
So, which Joanne's going to call and find out if he's interested. The other thing is we may not want to sell it back for what we paid for. It may be worth a lot more now, so we need to get an assessment of the value of that property.
And Joanne was going to do that.
Joanne's doing that. This letter from David says he's only responding to what he received, and he didn't receive enough information.
Right, and then we ought to get him the information. I still would like to put it in the general fund.
Do you want me to have Joanne give him?
By the way, the commissioner from Columbia County, they're not interested.
Oh, to Joanne, Utah.
Well, I talked to them.
Utah.
Yeah.
And what did they say?
Well, they're just not interested.
It's benefiting their citizens, isn't it?
Well, but if you have someone else paying the tab for you, what would you?
No, we're not paying the tab.
Well, in essence, for the, for the building, I mean, they have no, they have no financial skin in the game, so to speak, at this point. And they have a program, right.
What is, when we're changing some of the flood elevations, what is A and A and E? Does it, does, you know what that is, A and AE?
What number, what one are you talking about?
A six?
Number six.
FEMA, you mean?
Yeah, I mean, they're saying they're.
It's just the, the changes to the federal act.
But I mean, what is an A versus an AE, the designations?
It has to do with the probability of having a flood from 100 to 50 years. In other words, one of those designations, A, probably means a flood every 100 years, probably.
A 100-year flood.
The other one means every 50 years.
Every 50 years, okay.
You know that that is why the tax years are behind.
Right, right.
So, that was a 100-year flood. Well, you know, not behind, you know what I'm saying. All right.
So, no action on anything?
I guess they're wanting to know if we want more detail on this. I don't know what we would do with it. I mean, what, I mean, what would it?
Well, if you'd like more detail, then, provided, maybe further explanation. I would think maybe you could, if you had the time, you could talk with Charles and maybe give.
Maybe explain that a little more to me, for my benefit.
Sure, or he can, you know, welcome to get him to come in, and you can just ask him, would he like to brief us on these changes?
Some of the background is that years, for years and years and years, we had little things on the map that indicated where the floodplains were, but if you go to the actual but if you go to the actual site and do a survey, you find sometimes it's accurate, sometimes it isn't. So anytime a person was designated in the flood zone and they wanted to build, they had to meet special specification, raise their house on stilts or not build. And so sometimes a person then would be instructed to get a survey done, so that they could contest whatever it was, or prove whatever it was. Well, gradually, we're trying to improve that GIS map, and so.
To make it more accurate.
Yeah, to make it more accurate.
Okay, to move on to John Williams.
Do you want me to stand on the command, or no?
Um, you know what, if you'd rather just, I talked to him to get more clarification, if you two are comfortable with knowing it, I'm just kind of, I'm new to this, and I don't mind talking to him, if whatever you do.
That's good, and then maybe you can report to us.
Okay, I'll just call him, Amy, and talk with him. On this next one, how many vacancies do we have in the Port Authority? Because I noticed Brian Crock sent in something, and also.
Brian wants to serve on this, oh, yes, you're right, he also asked about the Port Authority. I think we just have the one.
That's what I thought.
We have to hold this until the deadline, right.
Right, I understand that, but I just didn't know how many.
She wanted to know how many.
Yeah, just one, okay.
Yeah, the deadline, wasn't a deadline question, just how many, you're right, he did, fine, I'll go, as John did for the Port Authority. The next was from Keith Rogers, the Village of Manaway, addressing some of, most of the things that we put in that letter. And I see they would like a meeting on the tenth, unfortunately.
That's not going to be a good date.
That would be a good day for me. Would you want to, should we just get back to them and indicate we?
Uh, yeah.
I hate to put them off, if they're willing to meet.
Too much, yeah.
But I would think we need to be available, obviously, to meet.
Right.
I wonder if we could just get back and ask if we're in the, in the midst of budget hearings, if they could indulge us to get, you know, a time further down the road.
Wouldn't it be a good idea for them to go ahead and meet and try to resolve the issue? We wouldn't have to be there, I mean.
Well, but they asked us to be there, and I think we, we sent the letter, or at least two of us did.
And you know, on that, on the next to the last paragraph, it says, whatever the route, both homeowners will still have the cost of a grinder pump running a lateral and the tap and fees. Do we have any idea what, I don't have any idea what those are.
Uh, no.
They may not either, I don't know.
Whether that's been given to them, we could, we could ask Jeff, or if Jeff can't do it or won't do it, we could ask Jim.
Okay. He's coming, I just sent this to him this morning.
Oh, okay.
He'll be here.
So, okay, we can ask Jeff about this, but as far as the meeting, you know, I do think we should meet with him, but as you said, in the room, the tenth is not going to be a good day. It would have to be in December.
Excuse me. And the next is the email.
So do you want to, do we want to get back with them and give them a couple of days in December?
Just ask them if, again, we're in the throes of the budget meetings, and could we back this up till a joint member, you know, a joint meeting in December? Is that all right?
Yes.
Okay, the next is Mickey.
Yeah, and I think, I think we resolved that we're just going to withdraw, and that's it.
Well, I would like to make a proposal.
Okay.
I don't know if the letter's already been sent, if it is, that's.
I don't think it has, because she was asking yesterday about it.
But here's what I was suggesting, I had time to run it by Maureen this morning, but I didn't get to you because the time went by, but the, there's a half-million-dollar grant from AMNDS, and that would mean there'd be a hundred and twenty-five-thousand-dollar local grant. When this first was done, Hiram College was going to be the local match, but when the new president came in, she said, no, we're not doing it. So then Doug McGee, who was orchestrating all of this, went to Mickey and said, would you be the sponsor? And he said, of course, you know, it's just a pass-through kind of thing. Then they went to the Park District and said, would you provide the local match? They decided not to for, when I talked to Chris, for two or three different reasons. One, she said that it's the path to nowhere, but actually, to get to the Headwaters Trail, you need three phases. Phase one is already being done, that's about six hundred and some thousand, that will be complete soon. Phase two is the one we're talking about. The second reason the Park District said no was because they thought it was very expensive. The reason it's very expensive is because it's concrete, and also the terrain is difficult. According to Doug, the grant could be changed so that it wouldn't be concrete, it could be gravel, and then it would go even further. If phase two is paid for, if this grant goes through, then there'd be one more phase, which then would connect this path to the Headwater Trails, which is a, a long-term goal of everyone, we'd really like to have that connected. So Doug, when I spoke to Doug McGee, he thinks he can get a hundred-thousand-dollar grant from ODNR to serve as part of the match. Then the only thing that would have to come from the local people would be twenty-five thousand, which is significantly less. So we could get a half-million-dollar grant if we could come up with the twenty-five thousand.
Would the park do that?
The park is not going to do it, I think, because Doug has already tried with them, and I think there's, I think Doug thinks that maybe Chris believes that they're in competition, that this is competitive grant. But Chris said, the reason was because they want to have a comprehensive plan for the new money that's coming in before they do anything, and there are many other needs and wants, so she doesn't want to act on this at this time, and I think her board is supporting that. So I think that's out of the question. The idea that I was thinking about, that I ran by Maureen, was that we've been giving the Park District a portion of the local government funds right up through this year, which is about twenty-five thousand. And I thought, well, we're not going to do it anymore, because they have the levy now. So maybe in lieu of putting this money in the parks for next year, we might think about the idea of setting aside twenty-five thousand from the local government fund, and hold it, and make it contingent, that if the half-million comes through, and if the hundred thousand comes through, we would then spend the twenty-five thousand from the local government fund as a match, so that we could leverage all this money and have an extension of that trail. So it's something we should think about, if we want to do that, it would be in next year's budget that way. Also, the other possibility is that there's still five thousand dollars remaining in this year's budget that we haven't given to the Park Board yet. So we might talk about whether we redirect that as part of that twenty-five. So that was the proposal, that I know it's grasping at straws, but I would really love to have that trail, have phase two completed, if possible, because we're getting half million from AMNDS. So that's the proposal.
I think the logic was certainly good, and, you know, and you had even mentioned, or in an email, I read, Vicky, losing five hundred thousand, and that, that, that's a tough pill to swallow. My only reservation is, because the Parks Board chose not to, and I know they have other priorities, and there is that void where that trail would end even phase two, and finally connecting it to Headwaters. I don't know if that's on anybody's radar, so it.
So would it be just, just done?
Well, that, you know, it, not that, I don't, I'm really taking liberties with this, and the fact that Hiram College didn't want to invest in it. I don't know, from a trail user's point of view, or the public's point of view, is that then money well-spent to have a trail that doesn't connect with anything, so that's concerning to me.
Right, you'd like to see a plan where.
Well, right, and where, where is that third?
Third leg.
And I look more towards the Parks Board, because that's what they do.
Yeah.
The other is, Kathleen is, again, right, on the, it's not, it is significantly unknown, but it isn't, if it came from the local government funds, but I think then we concluded our conversation by, there is just so much other need out there, how else could we spend that twenty or twenty-five thousand in meeting some of these other needs that we're going to have a lot of presented to us, too. I think these budget hearings, not, not for the elected officials so much, but I'm, I'm wondering about the other, you know, the outside agencies. So it's just a very anything to weigh, and I don't want to discard.
Has the third phase ever been spoken of, or talked about, or?
Long-term plans for everyone, we want that third phase. If we do, well, phase one is being completed, if this is a possibility and it does complete, then in the following years, they would be applying again for grants, to extend to the third phase, to hook. At that point, the Park Board may well sponsor the, the grant application, because that would complete the, and they'll have their comprehensive plan done by then.
Did you not present that to Chris, if phase two was done, would you?
No, I didn't ask her that. You know, I'm wondering if that might be a good thing to do.
I think that might be a good question.
To talk to Chris, because if, in what you were saying, Kathleen, if there is a feeling of competitiveness, which is healthy, but maybe the Parks Board and Chris have some, set their sights on something else with that grant money. So maybe, could we at least ask about that?
So, should we have Amy just send an email to say if, if we could make phase two happen? Wouldn't you be interested in phase three?
What I would think is, could we ask Chris Craycroft to talk to us about what they may be thinking about?
Could we invite her in?
Oh, sure.
Why don't we invite Chris Craycroft to come in?
That'd be fine, I think that would be the most expeditions for you to do this.
Well, in the meantime, then, do we want to direct Mickey not to write the letter? I mean.
Well, I think we could, if we can hold off on it, we should hold off until we have a chance to talk to Chris.
Okay.
And then you might want to also think in the context of using that twenty-five thousand for some other purpose.
Right, right.
I mean, just, you just need to get everything out there.
The whole picture.
Yeah, we should do that, too.
Okay, so, Amy, could you at, at least facilitate asking Chris Craycroft to come in to talk about that?
Okay, and then I'll tell Mickey to hold off on sending the letter.
Okay, if he can, like, like Kathleen said, there might be a timeline on that, I don't know.
If he can, now, if he's already sent it, they could also ask to have it put on hold by AMNDS, they probably would do that.
Now, when you say competition, the parks is in competition with the.
Well, that was Doug, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
That was Doug that said that he felt maybe one of the reasons that this wasn't as supportive was because she feels that Doug applied for a grant that they normally might apply for, but he's not sure about that. And Chris never mentioned anything about that, so that's just speculation, you know.
Alright.
But it, it would be good for us to, I think, to find out, again, if you're ever going to connect beyond two to three, or to the Headwaters, that is an essential element.
Absolutely.
And maybe we can find out a little more from Chris about that.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, referred.
Oh, this is. This is just from Rachel Graham, letting us know that.
Yes.
And the next is from David Chee, letting us know about the community of Yonkers.
Right.
Application.
And then it's information from Kate.
Oh, yes. Any, are there any concerns or questions by any of this? Because I'm having a bit of a vision about. Journal entry, where?
Journal entry.
Yeah. Oh, my goodness.
And we only had one journal entry to add, is that it?
Mm-hmm, yes. Okay, next, we will have.
Hi, Jeff.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yep.
We're ready. Jeff, before we start the joint committee process, have you seen the information that came back from the Village of Manaway?
Just this morning, yes.
Oh, okay.
About the requested meeting on November tenth?
Yeah.
Yes.
But anyway, yeah, I didn't mean, you go ahead, and we can talk about that after.
Okay. I'm going to show you, save down there.
Uh, my first item is a request to use Streetsboro wastewater treatment plant next year as a tour site. When WEF State Conference comes to the city of Aurora in June, WEF is the Water Environment Federation. I realize that I didn't put that in here, so you probably have no idea what WEF stood for. But they, they basically are a group of companies, individuals, cities, things like that, that, that try to come together and come up with a, a good plan on how to use our natural resources, you know, the water, and keep it clean. But they've expressed interest to use Streetsboro, for one reason, because it's close to Aurora, and the second reason is because it is one of the few facilities in the state that processes Class A biosolos through a dryer, so they'd like to come see that.
I thought we already approved this, I don't think, the tour.
I don't.
I thought we had it on your last agenda.
There was something Streetsboro, but I don't think it.
We, we did have tours for the city, or for the school, Shakira High School.
But this is the same other one. Which is really very nice, and it's quite an honor.
So, basically, at this point, we're just requesting for permission to go ahead and use it next year, when we can finalize everything with Joanne, as long as, as doing this, but this would be on Tuesday, June twenty-eighth, two thousand sixteen.
Is that okay?
Now, will those pumps be installed and everything, be ready to go on that, Jeff, by June two thousand sixteen? The pumps that were just ordered, and Joanne?
We hope that they will, but.
Would that be a problem if they're not?
No, we can, we can work around it, we can have the site working off, such that, that there wouldn't be any access unless you had hard hat.
Okay.
Those take a while, I believe they come from Finland.
Right.
So they, they take quite a while to, to be constructed and then brought over here, so.
My pleasure, can I do any? So that's just a journal entry?
Sure.
Thank you.
Alright, well, that's a journal entry. Before we go into executive session, maybe we could even put on your pen and pens.
Okay.
We did get a letter back from the Village of Manaway, and as we were going, Vicky had a question on some calls.
You know, I didn't know, it says the second paragraph from the end there, it says, whatever the route, both homeowners still have the cost of a grinder pump, running a lateral, and tap and fees, and I, I'm sure this depends upon a lot of variables, Jeff. But do we have any idea?
The difference between the good news and the bad news.
Oh, you have a copy of this?
I, I did see this, I didn't bring it up.
That's the other one, that's the.
Now, that's the one, that's the one I'm talking about, Kathleen.
Yeah, this, yeah, that's.
Which one are you talking about?
You're talking about the Village of Manaway.
Oh, Manaway.
It depends on whether it's gravity, or whether it is a small, small pressure system. Typically, though, I, I think with these homes, for them to access, they are going to need something to lift it up into the system, so the grinder system's going to work for either one, if it just has to lift it to gravity and then let gravity take over, or if it's the small pressure system, it's going to be the same system, so it should be the same cost for the homeowners, regardless of the solution out in the, the right of way.
And but we have no idea what that cost will be, because of the nature of it, so.
Jeff, would you, of course, you haven't seen it, just got the letter this morning, so what I was wondering, it, it seemed like a bit of a breakthrough to me, that they're willing to talk about it, where before I had a perception of, no. I mean, they were willing to talk, but they didn't seem, given the constraints of everything, that there was much to be done, so they did ask for a joint meeting, we're not going to be able to meet that deadline, I mean, be available on the tenth, so we're going to, we're going to respond to council and ask if we can back that up to December. So if, maybe something put on your radar, once we can establish a date.
At least the discussion has started, so.
Right. But I am interested, and we don't have to do it today, in maybe your, your view, having read that letter, where you might think this might be going.
Okay, yeah, I can, I can provide that for you.
Alright, so it takes some time, and the other, Kathleen was handing you a copy of that email.
From Mary Helen?
That we got from, yes.
Yeah, I did have a copy of this. Right, yeah, the way that the WPCLOF program's set up is they, they can't use that to connect to sewer system. But everything's still in the comment phase, so what she's asking is for everybody to comment to highway PA and say, why can't it be used for, for that, if, if you could use it for a, a home system to correct the problem, why couldn't you use it to connect that home to a sewer? If you could use it for a home system to correct the problem, why couldn't you use it to connect that home to a sewer system that would then treat it?
I would think we might want to address that, if that would help. That the money could be used for that. Is that all right with both of you?
Sure.
We could put together a letter?
Would you want to draft the letter for us so that we know what we're talking about?
I could, I could attempt to. Let me talk with Jim, though, because Jim had sent out an email of, to that same effect, about possibly writing a letter. And I kind of threw it back to him, thinking that he would be a better individual because of his history with the grants writing program and his history at Ohio EPA and the Ohio Health Department.
So, we could put a letter together to try to convince the funding agency to make that allowance?
Yeah. They will at least have to look at it and address it. You know, they'll have to come up with a reason why they don't believe in that, or whether they do believe in that, so.
And I imagine we have a timeframe. Is that all right with both of you if we ask them to do that? Give them an opportunity to have that changed? I think that's it for your executive session.
I do have a couple of items to update on pending, if you want to do that real quick.
Sure.
City of Ravenna Water, we technically are taking water from them again, as, since we took over the Rostown system. We started that on Monday. So, now that it is under the rest of Portage County, we are accepting water from the city of Ravenna again. It's on a small basis. City of Talmadge, I don't have an update on.
Before you make that, Chuck, is the, is there a resolution to issue about the degradation of the water?
It's not mixing with ours, so, so there's not an issue at this point.
So, you're just using for Rostown?
Yeah, and it's just an isolated area. It's the northern portion of their system. Right now, I think it's around 150,000 gallons a day on average. It's my understanding that they are working to resolve items on their end, but I don't know that they have fully finalized what they're going to do.
What would be your posture? Will we monitor this before we would...
Absolutely. Yeah, we would continue to monitor.
Okay, and then you'll come back to us at some juncture if it's not approved, or?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. City of Talmadge Water, I don't have an update on. Hasn't been any movement on that. Oakwood Acres, we received a verbal from the Ohio EPA last week that they were going to issue the permit to install, which means that they've approved the plans and everything for Oakwood Acres. That should come this week. And you will likely see a resolution come through Joanne to bid the project, which would then allow us to establish what the actual costs are going to be and what the assessments would be at that point. Village of Hiram, there's no update. I do have three other real quick items. The Rostown Historical Society has requested, or sent us a request to obtain some items from the Rostown Water Company. There's some plaques and things like that that we may not need, the shovel that they use to dig. So, we're going to evaluate that, figure out what we have that satisfies their request. Come back to the board and see if you're okay to turn that over to the Historical Society.
That'd be fine with me.
Let's see, we're working on draft costs for the Genevieve area of Ravenna. That's related to the petition that the board would have received last month.
Oh, yes.
So, we're, we're working on that. We don't have anything to where I can really bring it back at this point to let, let you know initial costs. And then we did have a meeting last week with the Health Department, or the Health Department had a meeting with Ravenna Township in reference to the Seaberry area, which is the north end of Bryn Mawr, over by 14 and the Capitoline area. Pretty much, that, that area's going to be required to connect to sewers. The area is in the service area for the city of Ravenna. They were there, present at the meeting as well. But they've kind of left it up to the residents to talk about it and see what route they want to do, whether they want to go with a public project that the city would bid, or if they want to collectively do a project on their own. I believe there's only about seven affected homeowners. So, they're going to give them a little bit of time. They do need to know, the Health Department has said, I think, requested that they, they give them a final answer by January so that they know what they're going to do.
Are they in violation of anything, Jeff, or?
In violation of health rules, because they're connected to a common drain that then discharges off, offload onto an adjacent property.
So, this is something that's going to have to be addressed?
It's going to have to be addressed. And really, the only avenue that they have at this time is sanitary sewer. They, they cannot, under the rules, they cannot put in a private system because they're too close to existing sewers. So, there may be some additional information coming forward in the next couple of weeks, next month or so.
How are we involved?
We're really not involved because it's not our area, but it's with, it's not within the city's limits. So, if the city does a project and needs to assess it, they will have to use the county as the vehicle for assessment. So, but they'll have to request that of us, and we'll have to come up with an agreement that will allow for such. So, that's, we're, at this point, we're just there to help facilitate.
So, we're just going to be cooperating with them?
Yes, yes, so.
Okay.
No, Jeff, I just, go ahead.
Okay. I just have one question on that tour.
Yes.
Will the people in Streetsboro that work there, will they be involved with this tour? Like, will Don Van Meter be involved, or?
Yes.
Okay.
They'll be involved. We'll have, we'll likely have some lab personnel there.
Okay.
But what we did find out is they will be eligible for the time that they spend on the tours to get some credit towards their, towards their licensure.
Very good, yes.
So, that's really good because that helps.
And then one of your engineers can be over there and get some kind of credit also?
Right, so they can get some, some CEUs for their license as well.
Great. Any executives, yes? Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Motion to go into executive session regarding personnel?
Uh, essentially, hire for...
Employment and promotion, and separate promotion.
Employment and promotion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Again, of course. Walk off, please, Mickey.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Unless somebody has a recast, I don't know.
Huh, I'm kidding.
Excuse me.
Motion?
Yes. Motion to adjourn for executive session.
Second.
Oh, please, Mickey?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, there is.
Jeff?
Approval to hire two positions?
Yes.
Okay. First is approval to hire for the GIS modeling engineer.
And there's a promotion, right?
Yes, and that's actually, it's a promotion to hire exam. The second item would be to hire for the compliance specialist position. And that's the...
And specifics?
We're going to give you the originals.
Yeah.
Yes, the specifics Jeff has, as to the people and the rates. And then we did, did we by journal entry approve the training?
Yeah, and the tour.
Yeah.
The tour.
Okay. Give that to Amy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Join this nice weather.
You too.
Get outside if you can.
Probably the last week of it.
Amy, I don't know, so, we're in here. We're in open session. We were talking about the previous information we got from Mary Helen Smith at the Health Department. And we thought we were going to try to clarify some things. Actually, Jeff clarified for us. What would be an order is a letter to the funding agencies, asking them to make a change on what could be, and how the money could be used.
That 300,000?
Right, that 300,000. And Jeff suggested that we ask Jim Reeder to put together the parameters of that because he's familiar with, with that grant. And so, that's what we'll, we'll do.
I'm not asking Mary, but asking Jim to ask Mary.
That's all.
Okay.
Yeah, we want to get a recall. We want, our board wants us to address that, so hopefully they can include the other, the other vital functions. Information Technology Services is next.
That should be fun.
Yes. Well, thank you, Mary.
That's a pretty good nicely.
Well, I, I think, from what I read, Brian just wanted to know who? Who was it? And I think we clarified that.
Well, I think Deb went through all that.
Mm-hmm. Right. Should be fun.
Well, we need a little fun, right?
Cheers, so, yeah.
For sure.
Well, do you think that's going, that's fun? Wait till the courts.
Oh, you mean it's going to be more fun, right?
Use your calendar tomorrow.
Okay.
I told you, suit up.
8:30, right?
Yes.
Use your calendar for tomorrow.
Oh, thank you.
Good. So, then 10.
Charlie's.
Sounds fine.
By Hain County Orditor.
The meeting tomorrow with Amy is just for regular advisory, anyway.
Yeah. Oh, the prosecutor's coming in tomorrow. But the courts are...
And Thursday? Do you want to raise this for a second?
Sure.
Sure.
Excuse me. Morning.
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 Okay.
Five morning this morning.
Are we on?
Mm-hmm.
All right. It doesn't show that we are. Brian, Janet, me?
I defer to Brian on this. He's the expert, not me.
Okay, well, we wanted to, to meet with you today, and we will send a formal, a formal letter with this response on it, but we did want to meet with you and at least discuss face to face, you know, the issues that you had brought up in, in your recent letter. So, after getting some clarifying information from Deb and Amy, I was able to go down through and look at each one of these. So, we can address these really quick. Number one, connectivity using the VPN or Splash Top. Both require a strong connection, so if you're in a location where you're getting a weak connection, you certainly can get disconnects on the VPN. That happens a lot with wireless, because depending on where you are and what type of wireless connection it is and the strength of it, you know, you may lose that connection.
I have problems with this, but it's different than that. I have a strong connection. It's not a problem. What happens, I bring it up, and I bring up my, my calendar, and then I scroll down the list. And when I start scrolling, it jumps like six pages.
I think that's probably item number two with the agenda. Feeling the agenda on my phone? Is that, is that, that a...
No, it's about VPN. I go on VPN, and I pull up my agenda. I want to read it from there. So, everything works beautifully except when I try to scroll down from one item to the next, to the next. And instead of going one at a time, it jumps like six, and then it jumps back about three. And then it, so it drives me crazy, so I can't use it. So, what I'll do is I'll bring it up on my, with you, I'll bring it up on my iPad, and then you can, maybe there's another way for me to scroll from what I'm doing now.
Yeah, we can certainly look into that. I wasn't aware of, you know, that particular issue, but that might be something, you know, I'll assign someone on my staff to follow up with you on that.
All right.
Well, John's been online. He says, "I need to put my credit card in there." And I said, "I don't mind if you use the county credit card and I'll reimburse it," but I don't want to get my...
But we shouldn't pay for it.
Oh, I don't mind paying for it, but I don't want to give my personal credit card.
There's no way that we should be paying...
That's what John himself said I had to do.
There's no way we should be paying for the VPN because it's something we need that's required.
Well, the VPN is free. There's no cost for that.
It's the Splash Top.
I think it's the Splash Top, which is like a, I don't know, $1.99 or something?
He says 10 bucks.
10 bucks, okay.
And the cost is not what I'm, I just don't want to give my personal credit card.
We just didn't want to use our personal credit card.
Right, the only problem is, there are things now that require the use of a credit card.
Why can't you use the county's?
Why not use a county credit card?
That's, if it's appropriate use of the county credit card, then you can certainly use the county credit card.
The only reason I have Splash Top is to access and save paper, to access this. So, there's no reason why this should be paid for individually.
Yeah, that's...
I have my own iPad. I pay for that. I pay for my own iPhone. I charge nothing to the county. But the Splash Top is something only used for the county, and it should not be paid for.
Well, I mean, you can certainly use the county credit card if that's appropriate use of the county credit card.
Jan, is it?
I would make sure it is with the prosecutor.
Okay, so...
Well, it just seems to me that...
I don't see why you can't, but...
You would have to use your personal...
Credit card's only supposed to be used for certain items, according to how they set it up in the law.
Well, I think with me...
I mean, I personally don't care.
Well, you know, when you use your own personal credit card, I guess I just, too old fashioned, I just hate using a credit card. I mean, I'd probably, world's worst when someone asks me to give me their credit, my credit card. I, I don't mind if they're lying or not.
Would you be doing this at home, or would you be doing it here?
No, I can...
Because you don't have enough credit cards, maybe?
What?
If you have to take it home with you and use it, that might be a problem.
No, it's a one-time, it's a one-time purchase.
Oh.
Yeah.
Then I don't see the problem. But I would double check to make sure credit card's okay.
Amy, you had said before that they had...
We have opinions.
That, what did they, what did they used to have in the desk?
Oh, the computers were in the desk.
The monitors or something?
There's one right here.
Is, oh, you have it?
Yeah, it's right there.
I don't use it.
Why can't we use those, I guess?
In the board meeting room?
Yeah.
Because it's more convenient for us to use our little laptops.
Okay, I used to, no.
Yeah, this goes good.
Okay, well, Amy said...
I mean, you didn't try it.
No, no, well, Amy said you used to do it that way, and that's just the only reason I ask.
So, you, you would use your tablets here?
Right.
Okay, I thought you were using it at home.
Well, you'd want to look at the, at this, because now we take our packages home and read them, if we don't read them in here.
But it's only a one-time thing, once you get...
Yeah.
Into Splashbook or whatever.
Well, I'm on Splash Top, and I didn't pay for it.
Well, then?
Let's see, John's...
How come you didn't have to and they do?
I don't know. That's what John was telling me.
I wonder if, I thought we had asked Joanne and then also Denise.
When I'm at the point where I'll go ahead and give my personal credit card, if that's the only thing that's holding me up, I, I'm not going to fight that anymore. I'll just do it.
Well, we're running into that more and more in government. Joanne has a list of what it can be used for. She has the credit card.
I think Joanne was looking into that. She had told us.
She probably did.
She was thinking that there might be some exception where you would not have to use it. I don't know, maybe, did she?
She hasn't gotten back with me now.
Well, we can ask her. And I thought she was going to refer it to Denise, too.
It sounds like the problem is that Splash Top Company will not accept a, a check or whatever.
Right, most, most companies today are no longer accepting purchase orders. They no longer accept checks. They only accept credit cards. To my knowledge, when we compare Portage County to cities and counties across the country, we're in the minority of those not having credit cards to use.
Or procurement card.
Or procurement card, right.
You can use a procurement card, but we don't have one.
Have a procurement card.
Is it a credit card?
A procurement card is, is like a credit card, yes.
Why don't, if they're like, well, Splash Top accepts a procurement card?
Well, we're not set up in the county to use procurement cards.
No, we have to go through a different procedure and get resolutions and bids. Well, because it could be abused if you want, but so can a credit card. I try to use what you have now.
Okay, if we can't use it, then we try, need to proceed with a procurement card option.
Well, I think you could use a credit card. I mean, we have a problem with this all over.
Yeah.
Okay.
Go on.
But you do need a strong connection. Now, I can't say, you know, in my, my home, on the VPN, I mean, it will stay connected for days.
What is VPN?
It's called virtual private network. It's how we connect remotely back here to the county. But if there is a weak connection, or like in my home, if, if my kids all jump on the internet with all their devices, you know, then, then the VPN connection might not, might stop working reliably because there just isn't enough bandwidth in my home to handle that.
I have a pretty strong connection.
You know, and when I'm in certain rooms in my home where the connection gets weaker, there's an issue there, too.
Also, I use the VPN when I need to look at my calendar, because for some god- awful reason, I cannot have my calendar on my iPhone or my iPad.
Yes, I think that's another issue here on the list as well.
So maybe it can be resolved later?
Yes. So, number two, trying to open a PDF form on the iPhone or iPad with no block. I think what you're trying to do there is this, this new thing where you're accessing the agenda, and, and that's not the best way to do it through email. So Claire and I are gonna work on another solution that will probably work much better and address that issue for you. So.
Can I ask one question? Is it only you guys having that problem, or is it all the departments, the way the letter was worded that came down? I, I'm having the problem.
You know, I am.
This particular problem is just related to the commissioner's agenda.
That's nice to know.
And there are some PDFs-
It is in the whole world, then.
There are some PDF files that are just very difficult, when they, when they, we bring them up on an iPhone.
You know, and oftentimes, we'll get an email from someone, some other entity that has a PDF attachment, and same thing, so I, maybe that will resolve it, but we get that a lot.
I get that on my computer downstairs, on the PDF files.
Number three, same, same junk email three times in succession, most likely because whoever sent it, sent it three times.
Wow.
They do that.
Concerning this junk mail stuff, before we converted to our new server, um, I got not too many, it was manageable, six paid a day or something. Now I'm getting like thirty, and so, and they're not repeats, they're the different ones. I'm just wondering if there's some way I can get those off, so they can't be sending them anymore.
Yes, there, there are two ways, and we'll send you an instruction guide. One, you can, when you get those emails, you can identify them as junk, and you won't receive those in your inbox anymore.
Okay.
We'll give you a little one-page tutorial, it's really easy to do. The other thing that you can do, if you scroll down the email, at the bottom, if you see an unsubscribe, um, option, if you click on that, it will say, you know, if you unsubscribe, it'll be taken off the list. Normally requires you put in your county email, and within, you know, immediately or ten business days, you'll no longer receive that email.
You know, I, I read an article one, one time, it's probably not true, but it said that if you use the unsubscribe, they use that as a device to identify a live one, and then, then they give your name to a dozen others.
Right, well, I, I, that may happen, but, but the majority of the time, if you unsubscribe, the federal government requires that, you know, spamming is illegal unless that unsubscribe option is there. Now, most legitimate companies use the unsubscribe option appropriately, but some of the spammers have it set up so that you could click unsubscribe and nothing happens, or-
You get more.
Right.
It seems to run in, I was gonna say sports, but-
It does, like in the fall now, you'll see it pick up because of Christmas, and, and we'll be-
I get more for, uh, vacations in Italy, Belize, in Italy, yeah.
Yes.
Timeshare? I get timeshare. Well, we get them at home on our phone.
Yeah, well, I, man, I don't get as many on the phone, but, but you'll get, and that's true, you'll get maybe four or five of the same one, boom, boom, boom.
Yep.
Last calendar items, um, we'd have to have a specific example. You know, it may be related to the old email technology, though, that we're gonna be replacing with the new Office 365 that we should be going to before the end of the year. But the other issue I know is, we've got a lot of people that have the ability to change your calendar and update your calendar from different devices, so, but I would say, you know, let's see what happens when we go to the new technology. Random internet outage. It also mentions water resources on, on October nineteenth. On October nineteenth, Pacific Water Resources had a fiber line that got cut, um, and AT&amp;T was called out to fix that, they, they restored the service the next day. Amy Cooper was one that reported internet issues with, with Lisbon, and we're gonna look into that further with her. We think either they don't have a big, a strong enough connection, um, or maybe, there may be some employee issues there where they're not using it correctly, so we will work with her to, to look in that further. Ryan Chapelford had, had reported that, um, he had experienced outlook errors, we've looked into those and addressed those, as he's reported those. Not able to view calendars on iPhone and iPad, that's correct. The, uh, technology, the obsolete email technology that we have is not compatible with iPhones or, um, iPads. That will be addressed when we migrate to Office 365.
When, where, when are we gonna do that, you know?
Before the end of the year.
This should be before this year?
Yes.
Great.
We're, we're issuing out a final list to departments to give us the employees that they want to have the access to it. It is costly. It'll be about a hundred and eighty-seven dollars per year per employee. But that will give us the ability to, to have automatic archiving that will allow us to be in compliance with records retention, e-discovery requests. So, some of that cost, I think, will be-
Isn't that all included in the bid package that we did with AT&amp;T?
No.
That was pulled out.
There was no bid, that was never included with AT&amp;T.
The 365?
No, that's with Microsoft.
Didn't we have that in the budget and was taken out for fifteen thousand?
No, it's-
What was it that Todd took that out? In your budget?
We wouldn't have taken 365 out.
No, that-
Well, I don't know what it was, I'm asking, Kathy.
No, there's, there's money that we've already appropriated for it, um, so Todd has that in the technology budget. There may be some additional that we need, but those will come to charge back to departments once we, once we know the final numbers of, of what every department wants.
It was something that was cut out this year.
The, uh, remote archiving of emails, that's a limitation of our older email technology, it will be addressed when we go to Office 365. Number nine, connectivity with printers. That was just a single printer issue out of the Dog Ward's office from a single PC. Once we got your issue reported to us here, we had somebody look into it and fix it, and Dave says it's working perfectly now.
Good.
Number ten, we had some old mail from Commissioner Chandler to Commissioner and staff. The only thing I can say is, those may have somehow been, between thinking of-
You know what may have happened? I sent them at the date when I was supposed to send them. Maybe they weren't actually sent.
Right.
If something happened, all of a sudden, all of them went out.
That's what I'm thinking.
I noticed on my iPhone, the last several days, that Amy will send, um, a message to me, and along with the one that's coming now, one from last February has also gone. Like, the one you sent recently said there'll be a snow day, and I thought, "What?" And I realized the date was last February, so they're connected somehow or another.
Wouldn't, so the one that you had gotten in February, if you would deleted it, that shouldn't still be in the system, right?
I don't know.
It might have gotten stuck in the outbox, if you looked on the outbox on the, the iPhone or the iPad, that might have gotten stuck in there.
It was bizarre, because-
I mean, I would think that, that some of those-
Getting ready.
It's mostly yours, actually, I think, Kathleen.
Yeah, it was just, I think it was just mine that one day, but I'm getting them from
her, and when she's sending them, I could show you on my iPhone that the last three or four she's sent, there's also connected to it, one from last year, either February or March or April.
I've been getting, when you were responding to me, I've been getting them two and three times from you.
Really?
Wow. The same.
I only sent them once.
I noticed recently.
Do you delete, or do you keep all the old emails?
I probably keep them. Some of them I delete, yeah.
Archive them?
On my iPhone?
I don't know what you're doing on your iPhone, I don't know how much it'll hold.
It's all my private server, I don't know.
I'd be concerned of overloading your own server.
Yeah, that's interesting, I'll have to find out.
You know?
I'll go to, I'll go to the iPhone company and try to figure it out. But it's not happened since, it just happened that one time.
The county website issues, yes, that's definitely an issue, it's, it's part of our old technology, part of our old website.
Part of Court View. My biggest problem was Court View in the public.
When will the upgrades be completed?
Hopefully by the end of the year. You know, we also have the issue, though, of needing a new county website, which we've shared some correspondence on. And we did, the county was awarded that free website, um, so we're looking into that with the prosecutor, they've already reviewed the contract, I just wanna make sure there's no ethical issues with us accepting that, but it's about a twenty thousand dollar, um, cost savings in year one, and I think it, you know, may be an excellent opportunity for us to get the issues addressed and get things redesigned, and then go from there.
Thirty-five hundred free service for one year, too.
Right. And then also, department's not being able to reset their passwords, that's always been the issue. It is a limitation of the old technology, which will be addressed once the upgrades are, are completed.
So a lot of it, something that you got in the year, get things complete will be eliminated, these issues?
Yes. Yeah, we're seeing, as we, as we migrate to the new technology, we're seeing these types of issues dissipate, so, um, you know, storage was an issue, but now we've got unlimited storage, per se, so those issues that we were experiencing in the past have now dissipated as we've completed those parts of, of the upgrades, so.
I, I'm looking at this, the one, it was on the other one, and I don't know if that was ever resolved. My calendar in the computer, the desktop, um, things fall off of it continuously, and Deb, so Deb keeps my calendar, or I go to look at her calendar, because if I put something on my calendar myself, chances are it's gonna fall off, and I, I-
Fall off?
Yeah, I just, it, it's gone, it just falls off. I'm wondering if it's that room? I mean, no, this has been an issue for a long, long, long time, I just gave, give up and-
It's possessed.
It's possessed.
And, and I would have to see what you're doing. I can only speak for myself, but I know that I make appointments on my calendar the fall off, too, that they, I put them on for one day, I thought, and they show up a week later, but I know it's user error. I know that, I mean, there's so much calendaring that I'm doing, that sometimes, you know, instead of, I think I'm putting on an appointment for tomorrow, but I, I hit the wrong date, I, I mean, I don't, but, but, but I would anticipate those, you know, if, if, if you're experiencing something that's a technical issue, those will go away when we get to the upgrades. I don't, I don't, I mean, I've looked at some of those that you guys have reported to, I, I'm not seeing easy solutions to those, other than, you know, um-
This is what I go by, Amy gives me-
Right.
Here's where you need to be, or what you're gonna do, in this case Wednesday, and that's what I use.
I mean, normally, when you make an appointment on your calendar, if you make it at the correct date and time, and you save it, it's there. I mean, it doesn't, it's recorded, and it won't change unless somebody changes it, that has access to your calendar.
When we get that Office 365, Brian, we'll make a change on our phone, it will automatically go to our computer.
Yes, if you add, if you add a calendar appointment, if you add a contact, if you add a, whatever you do, you can be on iPhone, iPad, desktop, and it'll all sync, right? Yep.
Okay. The Samsung Office 365 is the answer to a lot of this stuff.
It is, it's just going to be a costly solution, but it's the right solution for us to, to get to.
I like it.
So.
Good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I like it very much. And I'm thrilled that it's gonna happen before the end of the year. I'm thrilled that we're gonna have 365 before the end of the year.
Yep.
Thank you. And thanks for getting back to that, Steve.
Yes.
I, I'm not sure, you know-
The organization I put him in, in touch with is the organization created through the state to help increase broadband, so hopefully they will be able to help him, but we definitely know that up in Hiram, and Nelson, and Garrettsville, Wyndham, there are some areas there where they just lack internet access. And, and the problem is, the companies can't justify the infra, the, the cost to build the infrastructure, 'cause they're not seeing the business there to, to give the return. But, but what it creates is the digital divide, so we have some residents that don't have adequate access to the internet for, you know, kids for schools, for businesses, for people for their home use, and that's a problem.
I also referred him to John Zisco, who had problems in Freedom and still do in parts of Freedom.
Oh.
It's that whole north area up there.
Yeah.
Because John got some, uh, internet service in different areas.
Yeah, I'll have to get back to him, and I have no idea who he is, but-
He's a Hiram Township trustee?
No.
Oh, Steve Hancock.
You mean Steve?
Yeah, Steve Hancock.
Yeah, no, I thought he was, he was requesting on behalf of somebody else.
No, for Hiram Township and the, and the people that live there.
Yeah.
'Cause many school systems are giving tests and different things online, and they can't get it because of research.
No, I know, I know what it was about, that's why I asked Brian, if he had a solution for him.
Oh, have fun.
Okay. Oh, Kathleen, you were right.
I was?
Come on down.
You're infamous, that, that's, this is gonna be fun. I was waiting for that, but it actually was very-
Hello.
Hello.
You need to say one more, you're right, let me find you.
No, I got packets.
Oh.
I have packets for everybody. I'm Johnny Paul.
Okay, I just need to find your stuff here, here it is.
We're waiting. Commissioner's record.
That's a troublemaker. That Todd. Did you make one for your attorney?
Yeah, I did, but Amy, um, I wrote some things down here.
We'll go through the packets here in a second.
For the recording. Did you make a packet for Amy?
You know what Brian is saying, sets anxiety.
Todd has it.
Send it to leadership, then.
Yeah, that's, that's a good idea. Excuse me, before we start, I was asking, to send the leadership at least, some of the responses Brian gave us, to somebody's common comments about, you know, of whatever, 365, I agree, how we want to respond, and thank you.
Fun center, Todd.
Don't be shy.
We need a motion for executive session. We're going to executive session? Yes, Todd, yes, I have the motion to go into executive session for- There, here. What, to discuss Portage Office of Homeland Security Emergency Management Agency employment matters.
Do you have a second?
A second, the motion. Your call, please.
Keith?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
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 I'll make a motion to come out of executive session.
A second, the minister.
A second, the motion. Your call please, Amy.
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Is there action?
There is not, right now. Okay.
Recess for lunch?
We are recessing for lunch.
Yes.
Excuse me. I need to do this thing, my public meeting notice here.
Looks like this, honey. That's her hand.
Welcome to come up, Mark.
Come up.
Sure. Good afternoon. I'm going to read the purpose of this public meeting. The purpose of this meeting is to be held in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code Section 145.381, to hear public comments and answer questions concerning the proposed rehire of retiring Mark Gillie, Portage County Maintenance Supervisor, with a proposed rehire date on or about December 1st, 2015. Notice of this original public meeting date was published in the Record Courier newspaper on September 29th, 2015. The revised public meeting date was published in the Record Courier on October 21st, 2015. At this point, I'll just open it up for public comment.
Well, what I would say is pretty much the same thing you've heard in the past when we, when Sonny retired and rehired and Van. You know, anybody that has the history that Mark, Sonny, Van have with our buildings is just a bonus. And now that we have some younger folks that we've hired, and I'm not saying that these guys are old, but that we have some new blood coming into the building, into the department. It's important to have the knowledge passed down so that when these guys do finally decide it's time to go, that we'll have people in place that can step up and take care of things.
Mark?
I agree.
Yeah, those couple guys we hired, they're good workers the last, got a lot of comments from people. Good, good things.
Good skills, yeah, so.
So you've got good things to work with, right?
Yeah. They're willing to learn too.
Great. Well, you've done a commendable job, always have, and I'm sure you always will. Board, any comments or questions you might have for Mark?
Good. Always good.
If there's no further comments or questions, we'll consider the meeting closed and adjourned. And Mark, we will be meeting then to discuss this and take a motion on doing just that, offering rehire.
All right.
Yeah, I'm trying to think when we're gonna do that. We could do that. How would you all?
Let's do it today.
No, I think we should discuss it. We probably do it rather than do it in the public meeting.
Okay.
We'll discuss it and then we'll get back to you.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
We could move into executive session to discuss.
I'll move.
A second.
Your call please, Amy.
Vicki?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Are we on, Amy?
Yes.
Motion to come out of executive session.
A second, yeah.
Your call please.
Vicki?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Is there action?
No, there's. Yes, there's. I'm so sorry. What am I thinking? Putting someone? Yes, we, by journal entry, decided to rehire Mark Gillie.
Is that effective December 1st?
It's affected December.
Mark, sit down.
Yeah, I don't know that it's gonna be. For the request. I think why I thought.
The rehire date is on or about December 1st. How are you today?
I'm well, thank you. You?
Oh, I'm so happy with this weather.
It's gorgeous, yeah.
I was gonna like it at least two more days.
The radio is saying that this is the three-day golf holiday break for the year because it's not gonna be this nice again.
Didn't we call this Indian summer?
At one point, yeah.
Now we call it American summer. Yeah.
I don't care what you call it. It's nice. I'm glad to have it.
The last throes of summer.
So this is our conversation about budget, correct? I'll make sure that I'm prepared for the right meeting. That's good. Okay, great.
We're gonna wait for Todd to.
Oh, that's good because actually one of my questions was for him and probably just one. No. No, basically I have one brief question about this here and then a heads up about future plans mostly. And then if we, since we're waiting for Todd, it seems like an opportune moment to talk about the United Way campaign, right?
You want to do that countywide?
Strictly. I'm sorry, what?
You want to do it countywide, right, the incentive?
Yeah, I think that would be a good, the reason I say that is I think as a matter of optics, if we have employees who are not eligible to receive the benefit, particularly in other elected departments, I think that can be problematic. Now, obviously, that's completely your call, but from my perspective as the campaign chair, I think you're more likely to get better buy-in from people if it's an incentive that's available to everybody and not just commissioners' departments for what it's worth, which, you know.
What do you mean incentive?
Well, if, as I understood it, you were considering offering some incentive for participation in the campaign. Were you not as a board?
Well, yeah, we do.
Yeah, I think it's almost a form of bribery.
To what, incentivize participation in the campaign, you mean, or?
Well, to, I think it imposes on people. I think United Way has a bigger task in front of them of really showing people the legitimacy of United Way and the benefit of it. So I'm opposed to the incentive approach, but that, and if you're doing it, I think it should be under you as treasurer because you're the chairman and not under the commissioners as a board. But then Kathleen and Vicki decided to.
Well, I think what we, initially, we were just doing our departments.
Well, that's what I understood, but countywide, I would be opposed to it for him.
The incentive is just kind of a fun little thing, saying if your department has 100% participation, doesn't count money, they could each give 50 cents. They'd still be, you know.
They're gonna have a hard time getting there. I say that only because, you know, I don't mean to poo-poo that, but the participation rate in previous years has been pretty low, given, I think we have 1,200 or some odd employees, right, in the county. Last year, I believe there were 17 donors to the United Way campaign out of 1,200.
I think there were more than that.
Not according to the CEO case that I got from United Way anyway.
That's where I think you need.
How much did we collect last year?
Fifty-eight something. I forget.
Fifty-eight dollars?
Fifty-eight hundred and something. Yeah, not fifty-eight dollars, fifty-eight hundred and something.
And only 17 people?
And only 17 folks.
Not fifty-eight hundred?
Yeah, so this year we're doing better on that. You know, I think you, I hope you saw my email with the update, but we were up to 4325 in donations from, still only from five people at this point, or six, I'm sorry. I got a donation in yesterday. Six people at this point. So our participation rate's very, very low relative to the size of our entity. And you're right, even if you're giving a dollar, you're still giving and participating. I understand, and I appreciate and applaud, actually, the idea of offering some incentive to do that. I just, you know, since I'm the campaign chair, I thought it would be worth providing my feedback that I think you get better results by including more people in it, but that's obviously your call completely. So I understand and appreciate that. And as for the value of the entity, you know, it's, they are moving to a different model wherein they're not just being a pass-through distribution entity anymore. And they're working on some initiatives that are housed completely within the United Way. So you've seen the big red bookshelves around town perhaps, or their Day of Caring. Those are in-house things, and then they're trying to institutionalize a three-part change strategy. I think it's really good. It's education, healthcare, and income. So looking about how they can leverage the money that they do keep in-house then, which is only, I think, 18% of what they take in, to have positive impacts in that way rather than just being overhead. So, you know, I mean, I've been on the United Way board now for about two weeks, a month maybe. So I'm not fully prepared to preach the whole gospel, but I do think they're doing some things that are positive in terms of moving in that direction. I know that they've had some issues in the past from some folks' perspective on that. But, you know, again, I'm trying to look at how we can get as many people as possible to.
Sure, and that's understandable, that's.
To contribute and be part of that philanthropic activity for the county.
I think the first thing is to dispel the reason or to identify the reason that people don't give and to address it. And I think it would be very revealing if the board, your board wanted to really.
Well, maybe you and I can talk offline because I don't have that feedback.
For the private sector, I think they have incredibly good support.
Well, they're encouraged to do that.
Pardon me?
They're encouraged to do that.
Well, yes, I know they are. That's why I also don't, you know, I don't want to cross that line personally in the sense of employees.
Yeah, well, like I said, maybe you and I can talk about that after Maureen and sort of get a sense of what some of those concerns are because, again, I'm new, so I'm kind of a tabula rasa in that respect. I've heard a little bit, but not enough to have strong opinions, so.
People who want to give will give if they're reminded, but sometimes people, if you say, would you give to the United Way? They say, oh, sure. Maybe not a lot, but they'll give something. Most people are busy in their lives, and unless they're reminded, they may not think about it. Some people won't give no matter what. They won't give to anything. And so it's just, they don't. So, you know, you don't want to be in a position of making people feel uncomfortable. It clearly is optional and your choice. But to have a little fun with it by saying, well, you know, if you, if your department or whatever, percentage-wise gives, you know, in terms of participation, comes out on top. It'd be pizza or something for lunch. I don't know what, but some little incentive might make it fun.
Well, and I guess, you know, just to kind of put a cap on that piece of feedback from me, given that I'm trying to do weekly emails, I just wanted to sort of have a sense of when you thought you would make that decision so that I can plan for publicizing it.
Well, I don't think we, we haven't said no to countywide. I think it should be countywide, but maybe it should be up to each department to provide whatever. I mean, like, if the treasurer's department participates more, then it's up to that department.
Right, then US treasurer give them an incentive, or if our commissioners' departments participate, then if the commissioners choose to do that.
I don't have a problem with that.
But that's, again, if I just, it's something that I just can't support.
Right.
Okay, well, anyway, like I said, that was strictly because I felt like I needed to say it, so I said it.
Let's figure out, did we just decide, did we decide something just now? I think what I heard was that commissioners, if two of us are willing, anyway, will provide an incentive for the commissioners' departments. If the treasurer wants to do it, or, I don't know. What recommendations?
Actually, back when this was first brought out, I said, I believe I said I would support if it was commissioners only, and then that changed to Brad wants it to be countywide. And I.
Well, incentive could be for commissioners. What I'm thinking is whoever comes out with the highest percentage, that department provides whatever. Pizza, like you said, or whatever, you know.
The person that's in charge of that department.
Right. That way the commissioners aren't saying, does that make sense?
As a logistical matter, we'd have to get all the other elected officials to agree to do that, right? If it were to be their department, you know, so say, for instance, if the sheriff.
That's your job.
Well, you know, so having said that, I, you know, not to give myself an out, but maybe it would be better to stick with your original plan to do commissioners' departments. And I can do some outreach to the other electeds and sort of say, if you want to do this too, let me know.
They want to, but you know.
Yeah, we'll do that, as said, because I think that might be an easier sales pitch than, hey, do this. You know, which I think is a different kind of.
You want to join us, Todd?
Sure.
Okay, well, I will send an email out to them and ask them to participate then, in that way. If you all are into needing to do that. And again, we can, we can talk about the timing of that, so whenever you formally make a decision, just let me know and I'll plan to flip that out in the next email.
I think we should make the decision now. I mean, this is only a one-month thing. We're not gonna be here most of the time, so we've decided it would only be for the commissioners. We'll participate that way, but it's only for the commissioners.
Only commissioners' departments.
So that can be a journal entry.
Okay, and I'll put that in my next email on Monday then about that.
So you say it's an incentive?
Incentive, yeah.
And your incentive, just so I'm clear on what I'm gonna be advertising, is that the department that has the highest level of participation, you'll buy lunch.
No, not lunch. Where did you give us information?
Well, she said pizza.
I just said pizza.
She wants to buy one pizza.
A pizza.
That's why, no, I mean, I think you suggested this, maybe, well, we won't do lunch, but maybe we would do pizza. And I think we said, what's the department with 250 people? But no, you know, some incentive, maybe they can, I don't know, I don't even want to suggest that. But it would only be commissioners' departments. I think to you as chairman, you certainly can say that commissioners are doing that, but I. You have to come forward and be the leader and talk to those other elected officials individually. But just hang on.
Noted. I fully intend to do that, but I, you know, I kind of wanted to be able to say, here's what the commissioners are doing. Would you do something similar?
We're going to do something.
We have to, you say what?
To express our gratitude, we're going to do something to the highest percentage, did you say?
Yeah, percentage.
Percentage.
It's just one department.
Yeah, not dollar, let's emphasize, not the dollar, but participation. I think that's a good thing.
What if you get a couple of hundred percents, which is possible?
Well, they're tied. They will buy for both.
That would be impressive.
Well, like human resources, only two people.
Yeah, that's true.
Well, they're gonna get one piece of pizza. There's only gonna be one pizza box. Let's make that perfectly clear.
I'll say that it's food-related. How about that? A food-related incentive.
There are two or three departments that they get to cheap pizza.
Equals pizza, got it.
Then they get to divide up the number of pieces. We'll get a sheet pizza.
And do Little Caesar's hot and ready, five bucks. There you go. Okay, good. So I'll say pizza then. Thank you. And then I'll share that with the other departments, or share with the other electeds, I'm sorry.
Personally, thank you.
Okay, let's turn our attention now to the treasurer's budget. And how would you like to proceed, Brad?
Just a second here, Maureen. I'm sorry. Let me get that down. Okay, good. So, you know, in terms of my budget for 2016, I have very little by way of comment or question, and this is probably something that could just as easily have been an email as a meeting, but here we are. So looking at the line for postage, I saw that you dropped us down to 7,000, Todd. And I was just curious what the genesis. I'm sorry, it is 412400 under contractual services, the postage line. We had a request of 8,000 that was reduced to 7. You know, looking at our actual from '13, we had about 9,000 we spent on postage. So I'm just curious what the genesis of the reduction was.
Well, the three years it's been falling as more and more people move, you know, off postage, I guess. So that was the reason for that figure. Certainly, we would accommodate whatever postage comes out to be. But, you know, if you look at 2014, you had 7,100, and 2015, we're not expecting 6,000. So 7,000 seemed like it would be more than enough.
Well, and the other thing to know, if you get towards the end of the year and you need more, we'll transfer some in.
Okay. That's good. Again, I was just, that's the only reduction I think I have. So I am in no way casting aspersions or throwing stones. I'm pretty happy with the overall thing. I just wondered.
Just based on those historical expenditures and the rate at which they've been dropping the last few years.
See, those are estimates anyway, and then we keep money in the other line for us. So if people run short on some of those things, we can transfer in.
But that's one of those lines you're required to mail what you're required to mail.
Right.
Probably at the essence of this year.
And postage is what it's gonna be, so.
Historically, it has gone down.
Yeah, okay. Just a question. So thank you for that, and I'll make a note that if we need to talk about it toward the end of the year, we, next year, we can and will. So that'll be that. And that puts a bow on 16's budget. And having said that, the main impetus for wanting to speak with you today was looking forward, and this is, I think, in keeping with what I did when I was at the Board of Elections, when Faith and I would come up and sort of say, hey, voting machines are coming. At some point, you can think about that. This is kind of that same thought process. And it revolves around what I will globally term modernization efforts for the office. I have been, along with Dennis, meeting with a number of different vendors who do online bill pay, point-of-sale bill pay for credit and debit cards. And, you know, some of them offer online billing. So, you know, rather than sending them a paper bill, folks can sign up affirmatively for that service to get their tax bill emailed to them, or exploring all those things. We think, you know, from a budgetary standpoint, certainly having, and it's very, very early. We think, you know, from a budgetary standpoint, certainly having, and it's very, very early stage, so that's the reason of bringing it up now. It's going to be a conversation we're having for the next budget cycle in all likelihood. But there could potentially be some cost savings with going to online billing and having people opt in to not receiving a paper bill. That could reduce our printing and postage costs to some extent. You know, the other side of that then is there will be a cost associated with going with a service. So that's kind of where I wanted to go. They're pretty broad in terms of what their costs are on a monthly, from a monthly standpoint. To do a payment system though, is looking like, at least preliminarily, we're looking somewhere between $300 and $500 a month for most vendors to do that. And that would give us the suite of things, the online site where you can look at your tax bill, potentially payer tax bill, the ability to do electronic billing, and then also point of sale in the office itself. The model that we'll be looking to follow for that, for the taxpayer, would be the same one that we're on now in that the taxpayer would be footing the cost of that. So rather than, you know, Maureen, when you were treasurer, I know the system that you did away with.
A long time ago.
A long time ago, was one where the county was paying the cost of those transactions. It became prohibitive, so that was what caused us to stop doing that. We wouldn't go back to that. We'd still be looking to pass, you know, the convenience fee onto the consumer who's using the convenient service. So, so that would remain the same. The, the cost per transaction for the consumer, under our current vendor official payments is 3% for most folks. It's actually a sliding scale, but for most folks, it's three. And we're looking to come in underneath that with most of these services, somewhere between a quarter of a percent to a half, three quarters of a percent less depending. So, you know, somewhere between 2.25 and 2.75 seems to be where most of these are landing. It's better. It's still a lot. And I think that will kind of exert some downward pressure on adoption from folks, but, but that's kind of what we're looking at. So I just wanted to make you aware of that. That's, that's something that we'll need to talk about as we get closer. You know, we've got a couple more vendors that we want to talk to, and then we'll have kind of a broader constellation of who our.
And that's an option.
Who our players are.
So you would, you would go to that without, and you.
It would be an option.
Oh, that's an option.
Right.
How many other counties, I'm just curious, offered that?
Which piece, Maureen? There's a bunch of different things that threw out there. And that's, that's why I said modernization, because there's a bunch of different elements, but.
Not giving a paper bill, in other words.
Not, not a lot. There are not a ton that are doing that yet. Giaga, I know, has been doing that though for approximately six years, I think, five or six years, something like that. They've, they rave about it, they think it's great, saves some money. There are a couple of extra steps they have to go through with the taxpayer in terms of, you know, dotting the risin', crossing their Ts that in fact you did as taxpayers line up to get this in.
Before you would do something like that, would you try in any way to survey the, I guess, the people that are.
And the one thought that comes to my mind is that there would probably be some kind of cost associated with that potentially. Like if we were to do a mail survey, for instance, there'd be a front end cost to do that.
Or you could just print it on the tax bill and ask them to call.
To go to a website or something, yeah. I mean, there are ways to look at that. But I think.
I was just curious if you were doing.
That's a good point.
It's optional. That would pick a vote.
The money that would be saved, Brad, would that kind of offset the money that we're spending?
It's hard to know out of hand. You know, you get projections from vendors about those things, but until you know what your adoption rate is, it's really, it's really just kind of fuzz math, frankly. You know, so for instance, from Value Payment Systems, which is one of the bigger vendors out there, you know, they're claiming a savings that would offset the cost. But again, it's without.
You know, so we don't have to write the checks. Do we ever do something like that with the tax bills?
We, you're thinking of an electronic fund transfer?
Yeah, yeah.
We don't do that for our tax bills for the most part. That's effectively, I think, what happens with the credit card system we use now, Mickey. I mean, I think that's probably right. We have some hesitation to set that up generally for everybody and also for, to do e-checks, which is a similar thing.
I mean, we do it for everybody, but with our utility bills, we've been doing it for years and years. But it was our option, we went to the bank and made the arrangements. And then instead of the bill coming, we get a notice, but instead of the bill coming to us, it automatically goes out of our bank account.
Yeah, there's some backend things that make that a little complicated for our office to do. And actually, a lot of the treasurer's offices who've done e-checks bemoan the fact that they did. And some actually have stopped doing them and just gone strictly to the credit card model because making sure you're getting accurate information about parcel numbers and that sort of stuff gets to be complicated. So, you know, my staff has indicated to me, as have several other offices, that that's, that's more complicated than we need to be, especially as a first cut. You know, maybe at some point, but as a first cut and some new things, that's probably too much.
But it certainly is a thing of the future. Because it wasn't many years ago, just a few, when a lot of people didn't have computers. Now, I think almost everybody has them. So same thing with cell phone. So it is something in the future, so.
Well, I think what Brad's saying, one step at a time, I don't think he wants to jump right into that.
You'll look into it and let us know.
Yeah, and again, this is a, this is a, hey, this is coming conversation, not that I want to do this right now. But I think it's important for us to have, have on the conversation, have the conversation about certainly. And I'd like to see us implement it in '17 if we can, so that's where I'm looking on that, but.
Something else.
That's all. Easy peasy for me, like I said. Do you all have any questions for me about any, any of the things, items in the budget or issues you want to chat through while I'm here?
How is the loan program?
You know, Kathleen, that's a great question. I haven't looked at it recently. The last, it was slow for a while. The last I checked, we were at about 20% usage. But that's, it's been a couple of weeks, to be honest, since I, since I did a good look at that. Anecdotally, I will tell you, there's been a little bit more interest of late for some reason. Maybe it's the Indian summer thing.
Furnaces too, maybe.
And furnaces, you know, roofs, we've had roofs coming through and a couple of septic systems. And so there have been some higher ticket items that have kind of come through in the past couple of weeks. But I think we're probably going to be looking at April, May before we see another big, you know, swing of that. And then, you know, about that same time then, in May or June, we'll be having conversation collectively as an investment advisory committee, you know, to kind of do a postmortem on the past year and see what we want to do with that.
Brad, I think eventually this will catch on. It's just slowly catching on. People, if they, if they even do know, they don't quite understand. And a lot of people are hesitant if they don't understand something, especially if you already live. So I think eventually that's going to be a very good program.
Yeah. The hangup seems to be that it's, that it is a home equity loan. A lot of folks, for some reason, weren't catching on in the early stages. You know, the feedback from the banking partners was, we're getting a high volume of calls, but then when folks find out that it's a loan, they're less interested. You know, so.
Free money is always better.
Free money is always better. Yeah, so that's, so that's that. You know, I, I will say that we have been fairly aggressive in putting the word out about the program. We've, we've worked with all the other county departments who touch on the septic issue, for instance. I am having a meeting Thursday with another realty group because Realtors touch on this sort of stuff. So, you know, we're doing what we can to, to spread the word and hopefully our uptake will be. Will continue to grow. But at this point, it's not where I think anybody wanted it to be. But, you know, again, it's, it was a pilot program and we'll evaluate next year at some point.
Do you, back to thinking about the outreach, because I can remember at the inception of it, I had three people within the same office, and this was a dentist's office, asked me about it. And I said, I will get you some information. And I'm trying to think if I asked maybe Todd Peets. I still don't know what we have.
There's a brochure.
A brochure. And does anybody, is there like one central point a person can call and say, gee, could you send me some information about that program? Somewhat under your purview and banks and the, there's no one central coordinating. By the way, if we put another article in the paper, might rouse some interest and we could have people just call 1-800-FIX-MY-WITH or something.
As far as our loan program goes, we're the, we're the central touch point for that. In terms of the full constellation of the three elements of the septic piece, Todd did put together that brochure. I don't know who the central touch point is for that.
It'd be nice if he has the brochures, so if they did contact you, you could give it to him.
We have, we have brochures on our loan program.
Yes, you don't have what Todd.
But we don't, we don't have Todd's three-part thing, partially because we're the, we're the center, central leg of that stool, if that makes sense, I guess. You know, the first piece would be NDS's low to moderate income piece. I don't know where they are with that in terms of how much is left. And that would be a good conversation to have. But then mine was the, was the centerpiece. And then Todd's through Mickey was to be the last resort element, so.
I just want to be able to get a piece of information out to people that are, they're working hard and need some help.
Yeah.
And I guess maybe the best thing for me to do is round up those brochures and just take them out there.
Well, now they need modified. We just got the health department grant. So that's another, that's a fourth piece, and I believe they're updating the brochures. And that actually is partly a grant.
That's free money.
So the portion, 25 or something.
Could you give me some of those brochures?
So we'll get those updated, but that, you know, we just got that award. I think the hearing is next week or so.
You know, there are also a lot of very hardworking people that have jobs that still can't afford it. So, you know, I, the fact that there may be some programs out there, in particular, they've paid taxes all their lives, that there might be a benefit, they don't have to pay it back. I see nothing wrong with that. And that's what I originally wanted in this program. So, you know, you know if the health department has those brochures?
The health department just got their award. So that, they have not been updated yet, but we'll get on there.
But they do have my brochure. And you have, I think you have my brochure. I'll send it to you again if you want me to.
And they do have the old brochure, I'm sorry. They have the original three programs.
Yeah, that's, that's.
What we need to do is add the new piece that we just got as well.
Yeah, I just need to run someone and take them out for those ladies.
But that's unlimited, that's 80% income, I believe, that program.
The health department says.
The new one, yeah.
80%, yeah, that's good.
Yeah. And NDS had indicated at one point they were full.
I thought so too.
But that's the, this, this new piece we just got will help that continue on.
Brad, or in Todd, is there one piece of information that lists all that, like go to NDS or if you want, you know, it's a loan you would.
I thought Todd Peets did a brochure that also had yours on it plus theirs.
He does.
That's the most comprehensive.
That one is maybe more generic, I mean, not generic.
Comprehensive, yeah.
That's the one they're updating, right?
Yeah, yeah. And I know NDS has been filtering people. And I'm sure Brad gives them, I, I think if they contact any one of the three, they'll get sent to the right place. There may be a little frustration in that they have to be transferred, but I think they will get transferred there.
Okay, well, I'll round those up and drop them off. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And when we have some time, we can, we can certainly talk.
Okay.
Denise. Denise, morning. Good morning, Bill. I'm used to being in the morning. Thanks for accommodating my schedule today, appreciate it. Be glad to know I don't have a lot. Going through my list, we had a meeting yesterday regarding the 911 and the MOU issue. It went well. Everyone is in principle. Everyone, meaning the law directors, police chiefs, the mayor or two that was there, they are on board with the MOU. The idea being share any inefficiency and any surplus. Everybody was amenable to the idea of letting it accrue for right now and waiting until the end of 2016 to see what we needed it for. Whether you need it for costs associated with your 911 coordinator and program, or whether you, we needed it for an update or a reconfiguration of the system, depending on whether the state insisted on the four piece apps versus.
Is there a generalized, I guess, statement you could make from that meeting about 911 coordinator?
One of the things I've been emphasizing with Ryan, and it's, I think it's too late to do it this year, but next year, is for him to track informally at least, the number of hours being spent on EMA versus 911. Your EMA program and his salary and Patty's salary are being funded through that EMA program. And anything, time spent on 911 matters is an ineligible cost. Sooner or later, that's going to catch up.
Well, he is keeping track of it.
Well, he is, he is starting, he is keeping track. He will do a better job of it next year. And we figure, once this reconfiguration, new system is in and working, he will be spending less and less time on 911 because then it's a matter of reports and making sure operational standards are being met as opposed to constant meetings to figure out what we're doing. And that's why most were, everyone was amenable to letting any surplus accrue next year. So that by the end of the year, now you can look at how many hours is the, is Ryan and his staff spending on 911 versus EMA? Is there enough money there? Has the state made any final pronouncements on whether you had to reduce to four versus the AG's opinion that says you must distribute to four? You know, things like that. Most of that will be settled out by the end of the year.
Was there any discussion though about the need?
Should we have a 911 coordinator?
Yeah, full time or part time? Because we actually talked.
We all agreed that, and I think Ryan would agree to, it's not a full-time position in the sense that right now, especially once a new system is out, you don't have someone that needs to spend 40 hours a week on it. But someone needs to be in place as a designated 911 coordinator to maintain the operational standards, reporting to the state, things like that. There's just a number of, I think it's going to be quarterly reports because certain operational standards at the various piece apps need to be made in. It's not self-reporting by the piece app, it's the 911, county 911 coordinator is going to make those reports. So I think it is a position, you need to designate someone as that, but it doesn't need to be a full-time position. So I think my, if I were to give a recommendation, I think it should stay in the EMA hands.
That's what we were thinking.
Only because that just.
Makes sense.
It, it makes sense in the sense that should there be a catastrophic, something happen, that's the one person that would coordinate both emergency, emergency contacts as well as emergency plans. So it, you know, if you were asking my recommendation, it made sense to stay in the EMA department, if you will. But I don't think it's a full-time position.
And that's kind of what we decided this morning, it was a part-time position, but then we were thinking about maybe a full-time person with half the time EMA and half the time, what was the EMPG or whatever.
Yeah, that, go ahead. And, and like I said, once he's, he gives you that informal accounting of hours. This year, I think, is an anomaly because so much time has been spent on.
Sure.
What are we going to do? I think next year, he's going to have a better idea of what the true hours are that is being spent on each activity. And, and that's why, again, if with the MOU, if everyone would agree to letting that surplus accrue until the end of, at the end of each fiscal year and then making a decision. And in fact, one of my suggestions, and I'm just tossing it out, is that the 911 planning committee would actually make that decision as to where you're going to allocate, if anywhere, that accrued. That way it's, you get a.
I was thinking of accruing, well, you know, I wonder if we could, I wonder if it should have a brief executive session to discuss what we discussed in executive session this morning, because I thought we made a decision to move forward.
Okay. And let me, let me finish up my sideways list and then do that. So that might be a little more efficient in case there was something else to happen, go into executive session now. Actually, most of this, I don't have to report on nothing, to report on Aurora East, nothing to report on Green, the discrimination charge. That's being handled by Corso's tender that defense. We've got some meetings, interviews being set up for next week. Nothing to report on Duracoat. Again, as far as I know, the repairs are being made, the survey is being done. What I do have to report is on number 10, that Kern's case has been dismissed by plaintiffs. Technically, they could refile it within a year, but it's probably unlikely because that project is done. It was a bridge replacement, the bridge is done, and there's not, there's not going to be any more work at their house.
They dismissed it.
They dismissed it, yeah.
And the other issue that you hit?
The other one, oh, last week.
No, with, with that case, that, that went away?
It's all gone away, yes. The other one with the, the case about the goat that was adopted out and was supposed to be kept, that one away as well, plaintiff. to be kept, that one away as well, plaintiff business, that business as well. Again, they have a year to refile, but we'll see if that happens, so.
Good work.
So, yeah.
So we can take ten off the list?
We can take ten off, yes.
I'm understanding that there's a goat that's filed a commissar.
That could be, and who.
I know a few goats.
I think the goat's very happy with his home right now. But if you wanted to go into executive session for any pending or imminent litigation, we can do that, or whatever other issues you had, was it personnel issues this one?
Sure. Maybe person, hiring or personnel?
I moved, I moved to go into executive session regarding personnel.
I second the question. We'll call.
Depending, depending litigation, is that?
No, I didn't have any pending litigation.
No, no, this would be hiring, pending employment, or?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, Ricky?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Murray?
Yes. The main reason I asked for executive session is because we discussed in executive session.
Right.
Pretty good, and you?
I love that blue.
Thank you.
That is such a pretty blue. It's a powder blue, isn't it?
Good afternoon, Judge.
How are you guys?
Fine, thanks. Is there a motion to exit executive?
Yes, I still move.
Oh, I should be.
Second. We'll call.
Ricky?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Murray?
Yes.
Is there action?
No, there is not. Okay, we will.
Did we want to do a journal entry to remove the box?
Oh, you know, that wouldn't be a bad idea.
Go ahead and do it now.
Unless you wanted to do it next week.
No, we can do it.
Yeah, let's do it this week.
All right, we are going to add to journal entries, I'm sorry, there is action. We're going to add where the box on the application, county application form, that asks a person if they have a felony conviction or prior.
List the criminal background.
Right, that that be removed from the application.
We're going to put criminals, well.
Yeah.
Okay, but we, we probably need to say.
Why, what, what we're going to do in place of that?
Well, no, I'm thinking that we just removed that, but we have forms that are already printed, so.
Oh, we're not going to throw those away unless we got.
At the end of it.
So we need to confer with, see how many forms we have.
Unless, yes, we have like, you know, two beams of them or something.
Yeah. If we have just a few, we can go ahead and raise them up and then change it.
Is that what we pass until probably next year, right?
It won't be passed real well.
Well, we can find that out. Okay, Todd is joining us, is he not?
Yes.
Come on up, Judge.
Yeah.
Come on down. Why did you notify Todd?
That's right. You're going to like her when you hear what she did.
I like her when you like that.
Oh, okay. So you really like her, don't you?
You are, yeah, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one.
That's all I would want to be.
I have this from fifteen to twenty, is it?
We start on nineteen, with probates. Domestic court, that's actually.
Should be nineteen, twenty, and twenty.
For probate, juvenile, and?
Probate, juvenile.
Probation, juvenile probation.
Probate, I think, okay, so it's on page nineteen.
Nineteen, so.
Starts on nineteen. And continues to.
Yeah.
Forever.
I don't know if he had, Todd was supposed to change some numbers here for us, because he inadvertently made a couple mistakes.
He, he will be here in a minute, so.
Okay, so, so he didn't change mine yours, he probably didn't change mine.
I don't know, he may bring those with him, or he may do that later on, I'm not sure. He's already confirmed that he will be changing some things.
I hear him coming.
Yay.
I think.
I need to miss him.
Oh, it was Murray.
What are the numbers, Tammy, that you're looking at?
He inadvertently tied my salary into probate salaries without putting me out to juvenile court, so they're just kind of, the probate numbers are larger than they should be.
I see.
It's pretty confusing, because we're in both courts.
So he put both court administrators in one line item instead of to juvenile, and he is going to fix that, so. I don't know if that makes a difference to you when you look at the numbers, but it does to us when we're trying to do, you know.
Keep it separate.
So I caught that little boo-boo, called him right up. I might be a newbie, but I'm still, you know, tacking stuff with a vendor.
Sure. Hey, this is good find. They're cute. I'm still getting it. There he is.
Your ears ringing? Always.
Come on, Todd.
Come on up here, Todd. Please. Okay, how would you like to proceed?
I just, I'll just tell you some stuff, because I've never done this before.
Tell us some stuff.
So first, I'd like to thank Todd Bragg, in particular, for all the work he's done with Tammy and Judy Payton, who've done our budget. He's been real helpful with us on our budget. We're all new people. When Judge Carnes left, Denise Metropolis left, and Laurie Elwood left, so.
It was a lot of training.
Yeah, so we, we had all new court administrators, and this is our first real crack at it. We're all new, and we really appreciate all the work that he's done and the communications he's had with, with Tammy in particular. We're a little unique, because we have two different courts, probate and juvenile, in two different courthouses, in the regular courthouse and down in Infirmary Road, with two different sets of clerks and their offices and needs, and a probation department and juvenile court. On top of that, we share a detention facility with Joga County in a separate entity, which you're well aware of, which we share expenses, maintenance, and repairs for our juvenile court, from the work and some of their employees they do, because they own all that property out there. It traditionally has been an eighty-twenty split. This year, it's been a seventy-thirty split.
We're the.
We're the, we're always the bigger one. But we, we saved a lot of money this year, not necessarily anything we did, but Judge Grundel was excited, and his commissioners are on him, so that might go back to eighty-twenty, the more traditional. Our courts are different than other courts. We have confidential records and confidential hearings, and we have hearings that aren't open to the public, which is highly unusual for courts. It creates some unique problems for us, too, as well as some necessary things.
And is there a juvenile?
Well, probate court is because we have adoptions, guardians, we have medical reports, we have all sorts of things, so those are all confidential. And in juvenile, yes, because they're juvenile, there's certain things that aren't published that cannot be published or revealed. So that puts us in kind of a unique situation. Judge Carnes left me with an excellent staff, just incredible experienced staff, and he accomplished many things during his tenure. But in the last nine months, though, that we've been there, we've dealt with some interesting problems. Probate court hasn't changed in a hundred years. This June, we had a comprehensive change in probate court with the guardianships mandated by the Ohio Spring Court, dealing with minors and adults. And of course, we had the Supreme Court ruling on same-sex marriage. So we, we were hustling there a little bit. Our staff performed exceptionally well, you'd be proud of all of them representing Porche County. We were prepared for the same-sex marriage, although there's still some things coming down the line that need to be determined judicially in regards to adoptions, wrongful deaths, priorities for fiduciary appointments, and the things like that. And they're still coming our way. We also had to rewrite our local rules for guardianships, because the Supreme Court dictated it and dictated an educational system for guardians that they mandated before they even explained to us the change in the system. So all probate courts have been struggling with that. However, we rewrote our local rules for guardianships, we have that in place, and we had had our first guardianship seminar last Friday, and it was pretty successful. It was a six-hour seminar. In juvenile court, we've implemented cross-training. We're writing local rules, there were no local rules, so we're writing that for the first time. We're implementing the community services, that is, when youth did something for their actions, there's consequences, so we're mandating community service work, and we're doing that for the diversion program and the delinquency. You might not know, a lot of people think that the juvenile court is like a junior criminal court for a common police. It is not. We have a completely different purpose, as mandated in the RISE Code and in the rules of juvenile court. And basically, we're there to maintain the best interests of the child, we're there to do the least disruptive thing to the child's life. So diversion is a program we have, where the complaint, the delinquency complaint comes in, we have somebody review it, they determine whether that person's eligible for diversion or not, and if they're not, then they won't have a formal complaint against them. If they're not, then they have a formal complaint, and we proceed that way. When we make a delinquency finding now, we're ordering community service for that, and that's not changed a great deal, but we're also ordering it for diversion, too, because we think that the kids need to slow down, get off their merry-go-round, be responsible, and own up to what they did, even though it's not officially on their record, and also provide them community service. We find that's useful. First, it's useful to the community, because we can provide services for nonprofits, for churches, and things like that. And secondly, we mandate that the people talk to the child, explain to the child the services that they're doing, and how important it is for them, such as going to the center home, washing dishes. Doesn't seem like it's real important, but it's real important to them, because it fulfills a volunteer slot that they can do something else, and provide food for people that wouldn't have food that night. So that's real important. So, you know, we have them explain that to the child, and at the end, we tell them, if the child has done what he's supposed to do, we tell them, we ask that they, you know, give the child a pat on the back, give them warm fuzzy. That way, we get the child out of their selves, doing something for somebody else, they get a positive reward for it, and hopefully, it's a good experience for everybody. So that's been a real big deal for us to get that started. We also are establishing written personnel policy. There has been none out there or at probate court, and we're going to do that and have that done within the year. And we will, by next year, have a website that makes what we do transparent, explains everything that we do. We're also going to have CDs, so that everybody coming into court for the first time, whether it's a JFS hearing, dependency neglect or abuse hearing, or whether it's a delinquency hearing, knows exactly what the purpose of it is, what's required of them, what's required of the people that are going to put them in that situation, whether it be the prosecution or not. Complete transparency, we're going to have that on our website also.
Judge, really, I ask you, who's doing your website development?
We, well, we don't have anybody yet.
Oh, I just wondered.
Yeah, we're just developing now, right now. We're developing all that. We're also in the process, and hopefully, this will take place, we have four twelve-step groups, two for male, two for female, solely for the adolescent alcoholic or drug user. That's kind of unheard of. We hope, we have some problems we've got to work out with transportation, et cetera, but these kids, if they go to AA or something, can't relate to losing a job, losing a marriage, and that sort of thing. They can't relate to not being asked to prom, to be dissed on Facebook or texting or something like that. So they'll be around other youth that can share in this. We have a number of volunteers from AA and NA that are going to act as a structure for that initially, and just step back and let the youth, the adolescents, take charge of the group. And that's a project I love that we're working hard on, trying to get off the ground. So again, that hasn't been established either. And we have also a unique, too bad it's a unique situation, but when I first became judge, a lot of the juvenile judges complained about their job and family services, and we've had nothing but good cooperation with the job and family services. We've had a joint luncheon, and we hope to have more, so we can relate to our common problems, and developed a spirit of cooperation, so that we're all working for the best interests of children, even though one's more administrative and one's more due process and orientation. I just got notice that our girl circle that was established by the probation department, and basically what that is, is we have six to eight girls that have low self-esteem, or are delinquent for something or other, that they get into a circle. This all started because in the detention facility, we have a lot of boys that kind of bond together, but we only have two or three girls at a time sometimes, or we, I know, we only have one out there. So they don't have anybody to relate to and talk about things that are essential for them. So the probation officers set up this girl circle, so that they meet once a week for six to eight weeks, and they bond together, and they network together, and they work themselves out at difficulty, so they don't feel like they're all alone and isolated. And we just got word that they won the Department of Youth Services Award. It's a statewide award, it'll be presented at the Ohio Judicial Conference in December, so we're really excited about that.
Congratulations.
Well, probation department, congratulations. That was before I got there, but they, they do a really good job. In short, I think we're making a difference in our community. I see some problem areas coming, and I'm going to tell you about those, because they affect our expenses. We are losing experienced staff, especially in probation. As a matter of fact, the probation officers that established this girl circle, we lost her, to other counties and other agencies. Porche County Sheriff's Department pays more for their corrections officers than the Detention Center pays for their detention officers. So there seems to be a little going there. Detention pays more than we do in probation, so we kind of lose some people now and then to that. More recently, we've been losing people to Summit County probation, or Summit County Juvenile Court, which, for their probation office. They have more money than we do, I don't think that's the issue, but what is the issue is they get yearly salary adjustments or raises, and they also have incremental raises for years of service, which we can't match at this time. So we kind of feel like the Indians training people for the Yankees. You know, once we get people with some experience, we lose them. And we lost three employees in the last ten months with fifteen years' experience each, and that hurts, because although the educational requirements of a new person we can, we can get, and we can hire, but the experience, you just can't, especially in juvenile, you just can't deal with that. Second problem, and this is something that might be on their horizon, as you know, there's a election today to legalize marijuana in our state. That may create a dramatic rise in delinquency cases. Colorado had an increase in delinquency cases when they legalized marijuana. Some of the problems, as you might guess, are some parents or older siblings giving legal marijuana to children. Our children, sometimes are resistant to authority, and that's how they get to us. So when they hear that adults can have this stuff and they can't, they just say, why? You know, I'm sixteen, seventeen, what difference does it make?
Their brain isn't fully developed.
Exactly, it's not fully developed, but they don't think that. So that may open a Pandora's box to all sorts of services. I pray it won't, yes, I really do. It will be the worst thing in the world for our youth, as well as some other adults. I don't think we need any more mind-altering substances, not to mention the fact that marijuana and alcohol are usually the first thing that the kids, you know, kind of cheat on, and they get into groups of people that are like-minded, and that group of people might go to pills, you know, opiates, or things like that, and that directly leads to heroin abuse. you know, opiates or things like that, and that directly leads to heroin abuse. And you all know about that. We, and it's, well, another thing I wanna talk about, we offset a lot of our operation, especially our programming and probation department through DYS reclaim grants. I think last year, or it's anticipated this year, we're gonna receive $562,268, which is a chunk of change.
How much was that again?
Five thousand, six, $562,268 and 20 cents. I left that out.
And what is that for?
That's reclaim grant for DYS. And basically, what that is, is DYS has been trying to downsize since, oh, since 1992, 1995. And what they've done is they've given a whole bunch of money to the juvenile courts saying that if you have these felonies and you don't send them to DYS for the incorporate, you know, for detention down in their facilities, you know, we're gonna give you some money so you can work programming so we can keep these kids from coming down here. It also makes their budget look good. In 2,500, or in 1992, there were 2,500 kids in DYS.
Wow.
Last year, there were less than 500. I don't know whether their life has improved, but we have changed that thing. So anyway, this DYS funding that we're getting from this reclaim grant is based on a formula that a lot of that monies or appropriations depend on your felonies that you have and the persons that you send to a DYS commitment. So if you don't send anybody to DYS, you're fully funded. If you're a small county and you send a couple people, you lose your funding. You lose a lot of your funding. Currently, we don't send any children to DYS that aren't mandatory commitments, mandatories for firearms, shootings, murders, attempted murders, that sort of thing. Then they go regardless. We don't do that, and Judge Carnes didn't do that, because we don't like sending our kids down there. It's, right now especially, it's mostly urban gang kids, so we don't wanna send kids down there in that type of environment. They aren't ready for being in that type of environment.
To learn more bad stuff.
Exactly. I mean, most of all, we don't wanna educate them as to the ways of those folks. So we use other means. We have community control facilities that specialize maybe in alcohol or sex-related, and we have residential treatment, which specializes in addiction and sex-related offenses and that sort of thing. But if we just send a few of these people to DYS, you know, we're gonna lose a lot of, lot of money, if not all of our money.
It's better for the kids to be here anyways.
Yeah, or in facilities especially for that purpose. Kent and Ravenna, as well as the county, has seen a dramatic increase in heroin use. That's no news to you. You guys have been on that for a long time. But what might be news to you is there seems to be one or two gangs at least moving into the county or at least coming down here for a bit, attracted by the heroin trade. We've seen them in Kent and Ravenna. They're coming from Cleveland and other major cities and urban areas because of the heroin traffic. They also deal with, these people deal in human trafficking, which is, I went to a symposium on that and I can't, still can't get that out of my head, but that could happen to our kids. They look for juveniles to recruit for the gang activities. They look for juveniles to take advantage of in the human trafficking, which isn't hard to do once a person's got into heroin. And they look for the juveniles because they think it's easier to use juveniles than adults for this type of thing. If they establish themselves, they will become our clients, they will commit horrible crimes, and we will send them to DYS because we'll have to. And we'll lose a lot, if not all, of our funding. So that's something we need to keep in the back of our heads as things progress in that. I think that you might wanna, you might already know this, but you might wanna educate yourself by talking to the sheriff or the Kent Police or the Ravenna Police Department.
What are the gang names?
Heartless Felons is one, and they're one of the worst.
They must be very proud of themselves, Heartless Felons.
Yes. They have no morals, as we know it. And they don't care. It's just about making money.
Oh, my.
So anyway, that is something I worry about coupled with the marijuana that might increase our needs at the juvenile court. The next thing I'm concerned about, and I've been concerned about ever since I took office, is that we are courts of record, obviously. We either have to have court reporters or sound systems. We have sound systems. Our sound and recording systems are horrible. Our sound and recording system for the different courts aren't from the same vendors either. I don't know what you can do about that.
Are these old ones?
They're older and some are newer, but yes, they're older and they're in disrepair. In the juvenile court, we actually keep one recording system going with a paper clip.
Oh, my God.
And we don't have courts if we don't have records. I don't wanna hire three court reporters to take care of the needs of the judge and the two magistrates. Right now, we have a part-time person on call after-hours basis, and basically, she just types the transcripts that we have from the sound system. I'll give you an example. A week ago, we had a hearing on concealment of assets in a probate case. And what that requires is an examination of the person alleged to have committed this concealment of assets, which basically amounts to fraud. And it has to be done on the record with all the questions and answers recorded and signed by the individual then signed in the court. So we had the hearing. There are three defendants that went forward in that particular hearing. Questions and answers were done. We went to type them and nothing, there was a malfunction recording device. We had a hearing last week where we had a, it was on a guardianship where the ward was contesting a guardianship. He didn't wanna be put, he was suffering from dementia and he didn't wanna be put into a guardianship. So there was a record made of that. Well, we have a recording system, but we also have a wind tunnel that went through up there that was just making a horrible racket, sounded like an airplane was going off. You've heard that before. And unfortunately, the ward spoke like this in real quiet tones. The physician, we have to have a physician there for that hearing. So the doctor that came in, he spoke, he was oriental, and he spoke in real quiet tones. And the proposed guardian was hard to hear. So it was, it was like the Three Stooges.
Oh, my gosh.
But nevertheless, we have to have a record of all these things, and obviously, we can't when...
What do you do about that, Bob?
Well, we finally turned off the...
Oh, the wind tunnel?
The wind tunnel. But unfortunately, it took a while to get all the maintenance.
Has anyone looked at that? I mean, besides...
Yeah, they have, apparently, there's two, is what I saw, is 15 hearsay, so he put into what he wanted. Apparently, when there was a different guy in commissioner, he purchased a, well, heating system that was way too big for the courthouse. And as a result, the thing kicks on and kicks off. And I know when my magistrate's office, it was like, I would, could hardly hear coming in and out. And it's just one of those things, they just have to figure out how to correct it.
Well, we have Johnson controls that are supposed to be taken care of.
They do, they do, they're up there. Believe me, they're up there, but it's just...
We have a gentleman...
Because they ordered the wrong...
We should re-order the right one.
Thing from the wrong vendor. Yeah.
We should order the right one. We have a gentleman on the maintenance staff that specializes in air conditioning.
Yeah.
And has he been there too, do you know?
I assume that he has. It's not, that's not a new problem. But the sound system is, is continuing to...
Do we have a backup sound system?
No.
We need a backup as well because you never know.
Oh, it would be helpful if we could get one vendor, one vendor to do all of them so that we, he can be on call and understand the importance of the court record. Not everybody understands that we can't function without a record. So, you know, in essence, you just call them off court for that day, which is very expensive.
You know, Judge, I know that when the prosecutor moved into his building when it was new, they had all state-of-the-art video and sound systems, and I think that's all working very well for him. I know for a while, he relied on Ashton.
Yeah. I know Ashton does the magistrate's courtroom, and I think he did touch Pym's courtroom, but we have different vendors and things. I know we have, and we have the same problem in juvenile court too. That's the court where we held a paper clip to the magistrate's desk. Tammy can tell you all that.
We have Roach Reed that has, Roach Reed has installed that system at juvenile court, so we have all these troubles with that. It shuts down in the middle of a hearing and it just goes down and the magistrate doesn't even know it's gone off and then we know.
Does Joanne know about it?
Yeah, and we've called Roach Reed and they want us to try to fix it ourselves. I have my bailiffs physically out there trying to work on the system while there's a hearing going on.
Well, they point to, they point fingers.
Yes, and they're, they're not very helpful and the system is just, it's gonna need repairs.
Could you be more explicit about pointing fingers? Where is the stumbling block?
Well, Roach Reed will claim that it's our IT. And our IT says, no, it's Roach Reed. And then all we know is it doesn't work.
And I have talked with Brian Kelly about a new system and he's, to get three people, he said he was going to get three quotes out there, three people to come out and give us quotes on new systems in the, in the 2016, in the year 2016, he'll get that out there to us at some point. Because I told him that there's no way we can continue to work with that, but, because we have no money to fix that. There's no money for us to do that in our, you know...
Well, that's obvious, but we need something to work. We have two courtrooms in probate and three courtrooms in juvenile, so...
Yeah, so that is our major, one of our major malfunctions right now with our...
And you said, that it's tied to IT somehow?
No. Roach Reed claims that IT is the problem.
Yeah, that it's our equipment, Roach claims.
Yeah, well, first of all, I don't know why IT would be telling you they would get quotes.
Brian Kelly.
Right, but I would think that's something of, and I don't know if Joanne's involvement, if Joanne, I would think, would have brought something of that importance here to us.
To us.
We would have...
We've never heard this.
No, this is...
Brian is the one that, Denise Metropolis was working with Brian for a new recording system before we ever came into juvenile. And that had all taken place prior to us ever coming out there. And there was a file folder saying that there was quotes for a new recording system, and then Brian Kelly indicated to me that, that that had to wait till all the new servers were put into place. It had something to do with all the new servers that were going up and being put into place. And then we would take a look at that again once that was, had all, was all completed. So then, once I found out that those servers were put into place and everything was working, which I didn't know anything about that, how long that was going to take, then I contacted Brian again and I said, Brian, I understand the servers are all in place now and we could possibly look at that again. And he, again, informed me by email that he would be getting in contact with three companies to come out and take a look at that and give us quotes on that.
So we should bring all that to Joanne?
When was, when was that?
I have the emails in that, in a folder at my office. I don't have that with me right now, but I could get that information to you.
I think it would be helpful and we will, and maybe that's the appropriate place. It seemed, when you said that, I thought, wow, how did that happen? But I think maybe we can talk with Joanne.
Yeah, we, we don't know. I mean, we just walked in.
Yeah, we would just like to have somebody.
Yeah, sure, understood. Joanne is our procurement officer and...
I'll work with whoever, whoever we work with. I'm just suggesting that probably all the courts ought to...
You wanted to ask.
We need it fixed, but I'm suggesting if you replace the system, that all the courts use the same vendor. And I don't care who it is, but that way, we can have one person servicing everybody, parts for everything, you know.
I think, Todd, last year, did we not procure some additional recording equipment for Judge Gillette?
There were those three grants, technology grants, I was thinking of this year, that put some equipment in probate. That was kind of pleased, domestic, maybe municipal court.
Was that actually done? If it, you know, like Judge Burger just suggested, the same vendor would seem to make sense to me.
Yeah, we can get all that.
Whatever you guys like. It doesn't matter to me.
You just wanna fix.
I wanna fix right now, but I mean, the, I think, looking at it on the long range, I think we all should use the same vendor for all the systems. That way, we know who to yell at.
Yeah, right.
You know, when it's appropriate to do that.
And we got some of that grant money too. That's what we're doing to do some of the transparency recording videos. We've got some screens that we're gonna use for explaining to people what they're doing in court, because you're, of course, such a mystery to people. So we thank you for that too.
In the next few years, I've been networking with other juvenile probate judges over the entire state. And Tammy just went to a group with the middle-sized counties and the smaller counties. It appears that almost all the juvenile and probate courts are going to digital or paperless systems in the near future. Our court view right now is horrible, but we'll need to have a separate system for each court because of the confidential nature of our business in each court. And that probably won't be cheap, but it's something that has to be done sometime in the future. And most courts have their own IT departments or IT person. And I think that that would be appropriate at that time if, whenever we decide we wanna go forward to that. But, you know, in the next few years, that's probably something that has to be done. Trumbull, Mahoney have excellent systems. Trumbull County Probate Judge Federica has an IT person that can talk to us at any time that specifically sets up the probate and the confidential things. We'll explain how we get around that.
Diaga and what else?
No, Mahoney and Trumbull.
Oh, Mahoney and Trumbull. And then, when you talked about the separate court view systems, how many...
Yeah, we can't have other people coming into, no, we could do, we could probably do it for both probate and juvenile, but we, what we can't do is have other courts interface with our stuff because of confidentiality.
So you would have two separate ones or it'd be one that would be used with us?
I think, well, they do one for both, but they don't have separate courts five miles apart, so I don't know how that would affect it. But when the time comes, and if you're all interested in that, I would certainly want contact, could contact Judge Federica and have his IT person come and explain the whole layout to us because we don't wanna reinvent the wheel when this happens.
No, no. It might be something that you look at besides court view. I'm sure you've heard that.
Yeah.
Is it possible to have rough estimates on that from them?
Sure, sure.
So you have a ballpark for what you have?
Sure. I mean, you know, but you look two or three years, these other things, probably within a year or so. We also have a unique problem, I said, about the detention center out for the juvenile court, because what they do is they bill us for what they do out the court. There's a percentage, I think it's what, 35% or something like that? And they charge that for their maintenance people, for paving the driveway, for cutting the grass, for shoveling the snow, for maintenance of the building. We have flat roofs, so you can imagine the problems there. We have problems with the compressor and air conditioning from time to time. We have that Air Force One that lives out there. And we've just been informed that there's gonna be further replacement repair that we didn't budget for out there. I just wanted to make you aware of that because we'll, once we figure out what we owe, we'll probably have to file on it.
Judge, did you just say you have such a habitual problem with air that you have literally...
Yeah, this company, Air Force One's out there all the time.
All the time. That shouldn't persist. That should be the problem identified and fixed.
Yeah, I agree with you.
I mean, that's, that's ridiculous.
That's our juvenile courts, kind of out of our control because the detention facility, the Portage County Diaga Detention Facility, which we, is a different entity, which we share in it. I mean, we chairman of that board.
But still, it should be, it should be identified and fixed.
I agree with you. I agree with you.
Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, that, where you should charge them rent.
Is that what you were talking about when you said wind tunnel?
No, that was, that's at the courthouse.
That's the, that's the Ravenna.
Yeah, it's kinda confusing because we have two different courthouses to keep all this, to track all this and the problems, all this is.
That was the line item.
I'd rather just be in court with a court reporter, to be sure.
Can I ask you, do you mind? Are these things being reported to our maintenance department or not?
Well, that wouldn't be because that's handled through the detention facility. See, they do the work. They own, what are they, they own the property. Do we own the building? Do we own the building or they own the building? I think we own, it's like a condo. We own part of it. They own part of it, but the maintenance that they do, they charge us thirty-five percent because I think it's, that's the square footage that goes on to the things that affect us.
Well, I know they have boards, but we approve the budget.
You approve the budget. You and Diaga County both approve the budget.
Yes, right, right. So I'm just saying, if it's a problem, we should have some ability to address it.
I will, I will. I would be glad to make mention of that at the next board meeting. That when I was, before you all, you had some questions about how come this isn't being fixed?
Yeah.
Which is a very good question.
That was, we brought that up for a reason because on our line on our contractual services, we didn't put in for that in our budget because, and we didn't know that until we just got our last quarter billing. And he's going to hire another part-time maintenance person, which is gonna jack up our billing on that as well.
Which hasn't been done yet, so we don't know what it is.
So we don't know when that will be and that will, so that's another expense we weren't aware of.
Their maintenance person is going into hospital.
We were aware of it. Right, right. And we didn't know that either when we submitted our budget.
Well, that's been precipitated by their maintenance person presently is going into hospital to correct a situation with his foot or ankle or something.
Right.
And he might even be medically retired if things don't go right. So, I mean, there's all sorts of stuff up in the air with that. But we wanna make you aware of the fact that that might be coming down the road. And you've been good to us, so we wanna let, keep you fully apprised of what's going on.
If you see that request come through, you'll know why.
Yeah. And then lastly, we had a request for forty-five thousand dollars for residential treatment, which is invaluable to the youth and keeps many of our youth out of DYS. Right now, JFS and others help to pay for these services. We pay for some of them, but we share them with them, a great deal of them. We've entered into arrangement where if a child's delinquent and he needs these types of services, that we can maybe file a complaint to have him declared dependent. And therefore, JFS will pick up a major portion of the tab for residential services. And primarily, these are on sex offenders and alcohol and drug people that require lengthy residential treatment. Also, mental health. We have a lot of mental health. We have, with drugs and alcohol, you have almost everybody that has mental health problems in addition to that. So this allows us more flexibility in what we can do for the youth and to keep them out of harm's way, but not to put them in a detention facility that wouldn't help their condition at all, make it worse. So we've been able to do that with them, but that might not be a forever thing. And they might, if they have any budget problems or any reductions in their budgets or allocations, that might be back on us. So I just wanna keep you posted.
Judge, are you talking about this resident treatment? Did you ask for forty-five thousand?
Yes.
Yeah. And we probably should have something so that we can share in those expenses. But, you know, if you don't wanna give us forty-five thousand, we'll take whatever we can get. And if it becomes a problem, we can ask for money later. But I wanna apprise you all this. These are areas, and there might be some other areas that I can't contemplate, but these are the things that I see are trending that could cost us some real money. That marijuana thing is just, I just, you know.
Do you think that's going to pass?
I'm afraid there's a shot. I hope, I pray not. But at my polling place, there were a lot of-
You know, the problem is if it doesn't pass, it will pass eventually.
Sooner or later.
But you know, the state legislature could take action instead of having it go on for a constitutional amendment. And issue two, if it passes, will change the way it can be placed.
Right. Constitutional amendment's ridiculous. I don't think our founding fathers ever thought that there was a constitutional right to have pot.
Or to have a monopoly.
Or have a, or worse yet, a monopoly. But to us, it's problematic because it opens all, really Pandora's boxes stuff, I can see, as to, they had a rise in thefts, robberies, that sort of thing in Colorado. So it's like, you know, it seems like, you know, party idea to some people, but boy, when you look at the cost in regards to the kids, that's something else. So anyway, those are some of the things that I wanted to make you aware of, that, you know, we don't have to do right this moment, but there's things that we're looking forward to in the near future to improve the kids.
There was very in four hundred.
Yes, indeed.
We have one other thing too. You wanna do that?
Yeah, I can do that.
Since I don't know what four hundred thousand means.
What page is that?
For juvenile, on page twenty.
Okay.
Since we do not have, in our fund ten eleven, our computer research fund, we do not have funds in there with which to pay court view costs.
Which we hate.
We did not put in for that possibility when we asked in our contractual services. We should, because we've been paying that court view out of that fund. Mm-hmm. So we did not put in for court view, so we just wanna put everyone on notice. We may have to ask for an increase in that to cover our court view services because we tried to put everything else under our contractual services and we did not ask for that. And we anticipate, because last year it was eleven thousand four hundred, eleven thousand four hundred eighty seven.
Just under twelve thousand.
But it's just under twelve thousand. And we anticipate, we don't know exactly when it'll be this year, but if we may have to ask that it be increased to cover that. We wanted to put everyone on notice or ask that it be increased by that amount, if at all possible. So if it can't be increased by that amount, then it would be, you would be made aware that that would have to come from there because we are so low in our computer research.
It sounds like your contractual services are gonna have to be increased for maybe a month or a half.
Well, if our maintenance and repairs are increased to cover the maintenance people that's going to go on, because we had asked for the thirty-five and it was just slightly reduced to thirty. And that, because we were foreseeing our maintenance guy with one part-timer because of the letters that we received. And now-
We don't even know how that's gonna be funded yet.
Yes.
Because he might, he might hire the person as a detention staff, which means we wouldn't pay any of his salary. However, when he didn't work on our building, he would charge that up against us.
And he charges it time and a half when he does that. So, and he's currently-
Yeah, we're gonna have a discussion about that.
And he's currently, yeah. So those, we're not ever made aware of how he's charging that against us. So, yeah, we don't ever know until we receive-
Yeah, we're flying blind on that.
We're finding that when we receive letters on how that's coming about. So that other five thousand that was taken from that line item was kinda where we were going with covering for just what we knew about.
Right.
With all the repairs. And that building is just, I mean, it's one thing out of another. You've got the air conditioner, you've got the roof, you've got this or that, the carpeting, this and, and Mr. Bagnos, I've told him, he's been out there, I keep him well informed and he's been more than informative and told me that if we need something for that building that, you know, there is some other things to do.
I have to commend both of you. You've really done your homework. You give us a lot of good information, a lot of stuff that we had no idea.
Right. Thank you.
And I just thank you for all the preparation that you've done for this meeting.
Thank you so much.
Oh, I forgot to tell you. That's what I was gonna do. I was gonna thank you on the back. I'll be thanking Todd on the back here. And he deserves it. He's, thank you for working with the ladies. We have, also have some money that we have come, called in called Title Four, which we get from CFA. And last year it was eighty-nine thousand four hundred and some odd dollars. Tammy, that's the way she is, was going through the thing, found out that there was a, there was certain funds that weren't being applied for. And this year, or two thousand sixteen, we're gonna receive one hundred and forty-eight thousand one hundred and twenty-six dollars.
Thank you.
You're a way to go, Tammy.
Yeah. So she, about sixty thousand dollars. So she deserves an added way for that, for sure.
She should have. More than that, you bet she should have.
So, you know, just little things like that, we're discovering and we're trying to find out how to do things. Like I said, we're all new out there. We haven't even finished our freshman year. But we're trying to, we're trying to accomplish what you're supposed to do out there and that's helped the kids.
It's evident.
And then we hope that, to work out the money secondary. But we, we're real happy with our probation department. We're real happy with the, with our vendors. We have an amazing relationship right now with Job and Family Services, which is hard to believe that a juvenile court judge would say that, but we do.
That's wonderful. When you brought up about residential treatment, I wrote a note here. I'd like us to talk to Kelly Jo to make sure, to see what they're able to continue to do. And the other thing that just comes to mind, bear with me on this, because you being the juvenile justice judge and then Judge Grindell in Diaga being the juvenile justice judge there, and the tie with the detention center.
Yes, yes.
Would you, I would think that both of you, and you appoint those boards, would have maybe a little more direct impact on getting them to address some of these things, such as, you know, that chargeback you're talking about or, I mean, I'm not trying to put anybody under the bus or create a problem, but, you know, in my estimation, you're the judge, Judge Grindell.
We just discovered this this week.
Okay, well, I would think that that might-
As we were going through the information, actually, a couple of months ago. But more specifically, when we were preparing for this, some specific things that disturbed me.
Okay.
However, there's our superintendent out there, Mr. Renner, is, when he took over, him and Judge Carins took over twenty some odd years ago, that detention facility was, I, you know, I was a young attorney out there then. That detention was a mess.
Yes.
There were crimes being committed out there. There were horrible things. People should have been charged with a lot of stuff and it wasn't done. So Mr. Renner and Judge Carins built that out there. They've made it one of the best detention facilities in the state. There's no question about that. When people have questions or problems, Tom Renner's the person to talk to. And I, so as a result, we kinda leave hands off on some of these things. But some of the billing practices, whether they're from him or from subordinates, I don't know, but we need to take a hard look at.
Yes, yes.
And the problem with that Air Force One being out there all the time, I have, that's really problematic.
What does that mean?
Discuss. Air Force One is the, is the heating and cooling place.
Oh, okay, I agree.
Yeah.
In residence. Air Force One in residence.
Yeah, Air Force One in residence.
No, but those are such legitimate concerns.
Well, we have discussed that generally and he believes that he straightens it out. And Mr. Renner's, DYS dignity on one thing out of a hundred and forty.
Yeah, I know.
When he's out there and he quoted the vice code to him, he quoted that and they had, DYS had to admit that they were wrong on that. But I mean, he's, really, he's, he's a big deal in the whole nation. So I don't wanna insult him, but I do not want to be overcharged either.
Sure, no.
Absolutely. And, you know, I think your networking that you're doing as a judge is really very important. It really is. It gives you ideas, like you said, so you don't have to read it.
I was so lucky. There was a big turnover in juvenile probate judges when I came in and we all went to new judges' school. There was, let's see, Ashdabula, Mahoney, Trumbull, Medina, all counties around here, we're all in that. So we developed a close relationship. We meet, now we're meeting once a month for lunch. We have, you don't know them, but they're important to us, retired judges, Judge Spicer from Trumbull County who wrote most of the major legislation and was instrumental with Sister Brinkler, and Judge Clunk from Stark County. These guys are the dean of all the judges and they meet with us too. So it couldn't be any better.
You know, Judge, of all the budget hearings I've sat through, and Lord knows I've had a lot of them, this, by far, was one of the most informative. And it usually is, and rightly so, the elected official coming in and saying, "I need, I need, I want," and always justification for that. But the detail that you gave us and all the explanations and just the thoroughness of things that we, and I mean this sincerely, legitimately, had no idea were happening. That just shows your diligence and-
Well, it's quite surprising what goes on. I'd like you to come out sometime, do a tour and explain exactly what the juvenile court does in particular and the probate court. But the juvenile court is so misunderstood. Nobody really understands the purpose. And that includes police officers and services there. Because we can't, unlike the adult court where you arrest somebody, take them to the Sally Court and they're in jail. You can't do that.
No, I understand that.
It's done an entirely different way. And so, but people just don't understand it and then they get frustrated. So my whole mission over the next five years is to make our court more transparent. We're gonna do that through what you've given us and we're gonna do it through DVDs and through different things that we're gonna set up and institute at court and educate people. This is why you're here. This is what can happen. I had a lady the other day, she kept using drugs and she made all these excuses. I said, "Stop it. Here's the deal. Stop using drugs. You can have your child back. Keep using drugs, you're gonna use a one-year-old." Right? It's your choice, but you gotta make it right now. And unfortunately, you know, it's tough to do when you're addicted. But, you know, that's what you're here for. None of this other stuff. And I think the more you explain to people the purpose of the whole thing, what they have to do, the easier it is for everybody. I think we, the problem is juvenile court's been so secret because of all the confidentiality stuff, people don't understand it. But we can tell people what the purpose of it is.
It's education.
Absolutely. I can rely to teachers, I'm being on education.
He's paying on education.
All right, well, thanks for having us.
Thank you for having us.
We really appreciate all your help this year. Thank you.
I do.
I do too. But she's happy up there.
Sure.
Hey, you just worn the seats up for us.
Yeah.
You want a hot, you want a cooler seat.
Hey, you get the hot seat, Dennis.
That's right. He's still hurt. Yeah, he's got, he got arthritis on top over on his surgery, so he's very uncomfortable. All right. You take care.
Thank you.
Next.
Yeah, now you got us, huh?
How are you this afternoon?
Well, I don't know if you know, but we actually sent in our, all of our requirements to be the first specialty court in Portage County for, it's the mental, we took the mental health diversion court and we are turning it into a specialized docket in the state of Ohio that has to be, so it was a lot of work. We spent months on it.
Wonderful.
And the, our reason for doing that is that, you know, you hear all this business about mental health and what the state's doing, well, there's money, but it's only if you are a specialty docket. So we said, "You know what? We've gotta bite the bullet and do this." So we just had a, we have to have team meetings twice a month now and we have to see the clients twice a month. And it's pretty intense, but we're hoping, you know, that we can get some money to expand. And I mean, we're still doing this on a shoestring. And interestingly, not for all of you, Teresa Spiker is the head of our municipal probation department. She's really an amazing person. She's the one that wrote that manual for probation. So she was really the lead in doing all the paperwork for this, which is really about that high, that had to all go in. And I asked her, because I was, I had no idea, I said, "Teresa, how much of your day is spent doing the mental health?" Because she, she's a person who sees them as the probation officer.
Sure.
She said seventy-five percent of her time is spent working on the mental health court. So that's why we really need some money because we need to be able to have another body. And unfortunately, what the, you know, typical of the state, they won't give you money to help you get certified. They give you money hopefully after you get certified. And the last round that went out for grants was, we would have been, we would have been in the third tier. It was for, for counties or courts that had recently hired additional staff. And then they would get this grant. You know, we went, "Oh, that's not gonna help us." But anyway, we bit the bullet and did it. So today was an hour and a half meeting where we go over each of the clients and, you know what? It's the first time I've actually done that because they usually meet with Coleman and do it at another time. It was really, it was intense. I mean, so I came out of that and went, "Oh, my God, I'm supposed to be here."
Congratulations.
Yeah, well, they're gonna come and visit. They come and do a site visit and, yeah. So don't worry. We'll make sure it's, you know, we get all the hoopla that the county deserves when the time comes, but-
Oh, that's wonderful. Again, congratulations.
And Steve Smith, our, you know, magistrate who we hired a little over a year ago, he jumped on board too. So the three of us were meeting like every Wednesday at lunch for, you know, months, but- So, the three of us were meeting like every Wednesday at lunch for, you know, months, but, as I said, Teresa would go home at night and weekends and put it all together, so. So, that's that.
Okay. How would you like to proceed in this? Who's?
Uh, we had asked, my take on all this was that we had asked for this simply for some clarification and for some input from you folks as to what we have to work with, because it seemed to me, you know, um, I mean, there's not much change as far as salaries, you know, the big-ticket items, you know, the PRS, the healthcare. Obviously, we haven't added anybody, we're not planning on adding anybody right now as far as court staff. But, um, there were a number of, of, um, items where, while we had, obviously, as everyone else had submitted, probably higher than a one and a half percent, you know, projected pay increase. But in my understanding, from the response, was that you were planning on putting one and a half percent in, although the numbers seem to be back to two thousand and fifteen forecast.
We had a.
So, I don't know.
We had a twenty-seventh pay period this year.
Right, right. So, next year, basically, the numbers will be the same because of the million-dollar extra pay period, but that would then go into the one and a half percent.
Mm-hmm. And in addition to that, we put a lump sum in each department for the elected official to use at their discretion.
See that, where is that?
Where's that, yeah.
That's your one point.
So, we had a, we had an additional pay this year.
Yes.
So, that our payroll goes down next year, and what you're doing to make up for that is giving them a one and a half percent raise so that they're still going to.
Well, no, there, there's no twenty-seventh pay next year.
Yeah.
So, we are giving an additional one and a half percent increase for people. Plus, we have a certain amount of money put in each budget for.
And that's the officials.
The elected official to use at their discretion for merit or to make up.
For the lump sum.
Those people who maybe aren't being paid at job worth.
Okay. So, that's something we had to, the officials, thirty-one, three, oh, three, one, one, zero, zero, zero.
Oh, I see.
Now, the other thing is, it seemed, and this is, and maybe this is just where we start, but it, it seemed that the two thousand and sixteen requests were simply what the original two thousand and fifteen requests were, despite the fact that on several of those line items, we are already way over, way over budget. Uh, for example, the visiting judges, and this is where we're, we're really, um, getting hurt there. I think that the issue has been resolved in Columbus as far as retired judges, but, um, we have not increased. When we pay an attorney to sit as an acting judge, an acting judge, they are still being paid a hundred and fifty dollars a day, which is what it was twenty, next week it will be twenty-nine years that I have been practicing. I know, that's scary.
Congratulations.
Twenty-nine years.
Wow.
And it was still a hundred and fifty dollars twenty-nine years ago, and it's still a hundred and fifty dollars. Now, that being said, we haven't changed it. We would like to, but we're still, we budgeted sixteen thousand dollars in two thousand and fifteen. We're now, the revised budget is twenty-four grand, and we're already at twenty-two.
We're over twenty thousand.
And, and we still have another month and a half. I mean, I, I get, we, we each get thirty days, so that's ninety days. If we use Judge Gilletteau, Judge Watson, Judge Enlow, um.
Or visiting judges.
With Judge Shapiro, was he, was he, was he, he had agreed to take two fifty.
Yeah, yeah.
The Supreme Court calls for us to pay a, a visiting judge four hundred and sixty-three dollars and some change a day. Now, of that amount, the county would be reimbursed half of that, but it doesn't come to us, it comes to you, which is fine.
It goes in the general fund.
But we generally try not to use, you know, because of the, because of the cost. We try to use attorneys, acting judges, we try, we've reached an agreement with Judge Watson, instead of four sixty, she, she'll, you know, she'll take two hundred or two fifty or something.
Because Judge Fankhauser was paying Judge Shapiro two fifty, we agreed then to give Judge Watson two fifty. We didn't think it was fair.
So, if we figure, we figure, if we have a hundred days a year, which is, I have not even used them, not that I.
I use mine.
Not, not, I still have, I still have some time to use by the end of the year, because we don't get to carry any of it over. We don't get to carry any of our time over, we're elected officials, so if we don't use it, we lose it, which, you know, again, either here nor there, but that's just the way it is. Um, there, we figured a hundred dollars a day at two fifty a day is twenty-five grand. And so, we'd ask that we, that be taken into account. We don't like asking, you know, in September, hey, we like to go to a seminar, but we don't have any money in our training and our, in our budget anymore. Uh, we, we try to be careful what we spend, obviously, but there are several line items that it seems were simply just the, the two thousand and fifteen figure, um, and we are already over the two thousand and fifteen figure. So, it didn't seem to me to make much sense to just plug in the two thousand and fifteen figures when we know that those are way below where they need to be. That was one of the items. One of the purposes of, 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 of setting this up, so we can get some sort of realistic, um.
Are you talking about the sixteen thousand here for this?
Right.
Okay.
The ten thousand dollars fee expenses, we've had, and again, this is just a product of the times, I think, unfortunately. Um, there are, as Judge Oiswick alluded to, there, you know, there, there seems to be much more mental health issues creeping up in the court. Uh, we are having to refer people for psychological evaluations much more frequently than, than it was even five years ago, it seems. And each one of those is, each one of those, and we have an agreement with some of the psychological to do it at a reduced cost, and that's still seven hundred and fifty dollars a pop, right?
Yeah, it might be six fifty, but understand, some of these, like, I've got a kid right now who's sitting in jail. I mean, some of them we have to do in jail because we are uncomfortable in some cases when there's a threat of harm to the community of not having that full psychological done in jail. You know, I tried to send this last kid to, um, North Coast Behavioral, and they said, somebody, um, somebody did some legal research, and they cannot take Munich Court cases for, um, for competency evaluations. But he was a Buckeye resident, you know, he's a DD client, and assaulted the caseworker and whatever, and there's, what do we do with him? And, you know, there's a allegation that he's not competent, which he probably isn't, so there's A, nowhere safe to put him, and B, I have to order a competency evaluation, which will be performed by Summit Psych, and I said, he's got to stay in jail till it's done. Now, that's six hundred and fifty dollars, and that, and as Kevin said, we are getting way more of those. You know, we've got a bigger drug problem, so you, you combine the drugs and the mental health issues, there are a lot of people out there self-medicating, and there, I think there are a lot more people that are dangerous to themselves than others, and we're hesitant to cut them loose until we know what's going on. You know, we have a new form that we have to fill out now. Every time we order a mental health evaluation, if it's, if it's as a result of a viol, a crime of violence, assault, domestic violence, whatever, we actually have to fill out a form that goes, it's the NCIC, whatever, and it goes to the law enforcement agency that was involved in the case, and it gets put into leads so that there is notice to law enforcement that if, you know, that if they pick this person up, that there is a mental health evaluation being done, and then when it's done, we have to report back to this agency to let them back to the law enforcement agency and get it taken out of leads when there is, basically, when the evaluation says John's okay, he doesn't need, but this is all part of what's going on in society.
It was a result of a, of a deputy being killed in Southern Ohio on her, her way out to serve some papers on some gentleman who was undergoing a mental, who was supposedly undergoing a mental health evaluation, and he came out blasting with a shotgun. And, and, you know, nobody knew, she didn't, had no clue that this guy was, was, um, undergoing these issues.
Good idea.
So, as a result of that, a new law was passed a year or so ago, um, as a result of that death. And, and so, yeah, we have to, we have to do that so that they have, are warned, hey, this person is undergoing a mental health evaluation.
Uh, going back to the, this team judge, I'm a little bit confused, maybe you could help me. Um, visiting judge by Supreme Court ruling earns five hundred, four hundred and fifty-three dollars?
Well, now it's four sixty.
Four sixty.
Four, four sixty-something or other, it's between.
That's a visiting judge.
Plus, it's a.
It's not an acting judge. An acting judge are the attorneys who've kind of taken, registered and taken the courses to serve.
As the visiting judge, the judges that we have, we pay a hundred and fifty a day, what do we call them?
Acting.
Acting judge.
They're the local attorneys, and they have to be Portage County attorneys.
Right.
It'd be, could be a former judge.
No.
No.
Well, yeah, a former judge that didn't retire, yeah.
But Francis Bar Watson, who retired, what does she get paid if she comes in?
She gets paid.
Is she a visiting judge?
Well, we made a deal with her, we'll pay, we'll pay you two fifty, we won't pay you the four sixty-three and get it back from the Supreme Court and go into the general fund.
Okay.
And she agreed to that.
Okay.
But there, I don't want you to think that this is only, that we only bring these people in because we're, you know, going on vacation. I mean, we bring them in for seminars, which we are, you know, we have to do forty hours every two years. We also bring them in when we're sick, you know, if one, project, Kevin and I on occasion can cover for each other because we're in the same courthouse, but if we're sick, we've got to bring somebody in. And the other issue is if there's a conflict. And we do have conflicts. We have some conflicts now.
And you do need vacation, I mean.
Well, we get thirty days, and I'm sorry, but I'm taking my thirty days.
Well, and, and we do have, we do have conflicts, we have people who, for whatever reason, we cannot hear the case, whether it be family members or former clients or, you know.
Business relationships.
Business relationships, and we have to have a, the Supreme Court assign a judge, and we don't have any control over who they assign. Now, those attorney, now those judges are paid the four sixty-three, or whatever it is.
Now, if usually, if we have a conflict, the local attorneys have a conflict, they don't want to handle it either. So, that's when we go to the Supreme Court and say, assign somebody to do this. And actually, I think we try pretty hard when, when, when there are a couple of conflicts, we kind of combine them all, like my go case and Judge Fankhauser's rentals. I mean, we got one visiting judge in to.
Try and schedule them all the same day.
I was sued for, for a go case.
We are conscientious of, of trying to, you know, next week I'm, I'm filling in for, for Judge Fankhauser on Monday and Wed, or Monday and Thursday, instead of getting somebody in to fill in for him. So, we, and, you know, Judge Oiswick and I, you know, if she, if she needs to be gone, you know, I'll, especially like on our jury weeks, I, I'm going to be here anyhow, I'll gladly cover your schedule, you know. Um, you know, we, all three of us have elderly parents, so, you know, and, and elderly in-laws, uh, so, so, you know, those.
Children all over the globe.
Right, so, so those things, those things come into play. We try to cover it, but I'm telling you, sixteen thousand dollars is, is not even realistic.
We really appreciate those efforts because it certainly demonstrates our mutual concern about trying really hard to stay within the budget and, but still, on these particular issues, the visiting judge expense and the fee expense, the amount that we placed in here is an estimate of what you might need next year.
Right.
But if you need more.
But we're already so far over.
That's what he's saying, he's over. I have a question about these figures, because I heard you reference now, in essence, that's just not realistic, we're over that, we're over that. So, I, I guess maybe I'm posing this to you, Todd, you've got a forecast figure. What exactly, in two thousand and fifteen, does that forecast represent, actual year-to-date? It's what's been spent? Is that what was budgeted?
The forecast would be what was spent year-to-date, prorating out for the rest of the year.
Well, Kevin is saying that more than that.
But they're over, and so how realistic?
We're already at twenty thousand.
Right, so.
A visiting judge.
And so, it's not year-to-date then?
Well, it was, these forecasts were done.
Couple of months ago, I assume.
End of July.
Well, you know, here, here's the other issue.
And they did, I mean, they were paying, I thought, one hundred or one fifty, I think every, most of them are being paid two fifty now. So, there it was a matter of the fee went up. And again, we, we cover it.
Well, but just to say we cover it, I mean, to me, isn't, well, I appreciate what you're saying, but that isn't a realistic depiction to me of what, what are we actually spending? And then I see maybe their point, you're basing the two thousand and fifteen.
Two thousand and sixteen.
On a, a Romeo's figure that is not representative of, of the cost category.
Well, the twenty sixteen would be what they put in, the twenty sixteen request.
Oh, sixteen thousand?
And we matched the request.
Oh, okay.
Now, the request should have been higher because the rates went up, but again, we'll adjust for all that.
Our rates didn't go up. We are proposing that attorneys get paid either two or two hundred and fifty dollars because it has not been raised in twenty-nine years.
Right.
The amount used.
But we could, we could, uh, we could agree that, you know, Judge Watson, Judge Watson can be a visiting judge, correct me if I'm wrong, Barb, but I think that Judge Watson can be a visiting judge until she's eighty. And once she is eighty, she no longer qualifies as a visiting judge. You must then be an acting, because we went through that with Judge Dickinson.
What about this new change in O, O P E R S?
I know, and that's what.
Did you get that thing I sent out to you?
Yes, well, that was one of the things that prompted this concern, because we were, we were being told that the majority of acting judges were going to, was, uh, stop doing it after January one because of changes in O P E R S. And because when, when they're paid the four sixty-three, they're paying P E R S on that, the Supreme Court is paying P E R S on that. When you, when you have Judge Enlow filling in for Judge Dougherty, he's getting paid the four sixty-three a day. And he, and out of that, they're paying P E R S, and they're paying, you know, whatever else out of that into P E R S. Well, the P E R S said, well, that's a, a retired, rehired, uh, issue, and they were going to, it was going to affect their healthcare. Supposedly, there is a, there was a law that went into effect yesterday.
Yeah, they tapped something on.
Well, they've tacked something on to a creation of a domestic relations position in Delaware County, supposedly addressing this problem, that we are, because we're talking about, it didn't really impact us as much because when we pay them two fifty a day, we're, it's a contract amount, and we're not paying P E R S, we're not paying, you know, the, the figures into their healthcare or any of their retirement. So, so it didn't impact them through Munich Court because it's a contract employee. It was, but the Supreme Court, we can use acting judges, common police court cannot. So, they were really facing, you were going to be really faced with a dilemma when all these judges, they were going to go from a hundred and thirty-five. when all these judges, they were going to go from a hundred and thirty-five statewide to thirty, the estimate was. And, uh, yeah, there was going to be a huge problem statewide, but supposedly that has been corrected.
Well, Kevin, what's the now, what's the figure? If, if we get a visiting judge from the Supreme Court and we pay them the four sixty-three, how much does the Supreme Court or state, whoever it is, compensate them?
Half of it.
The general.
Half of it, two hundred and thirty.
So we've talked about the fact that we may very well start doing that more often. But the problem is if we do, we have to have the amount in the budget, and then you guys get it back in the general fund. It doesn't come back into our fund.
Here, here's the dilemma. It would, it would explode our line item, but in the end, if we were paying four sixty-three a day for a hundred days, it would cost the county twenty-three thousand dollars as opposed to if we were paying a hundred days at two fifty a day without getting any reimbursement, it would cost the county twenty-five thousand dollars. So as Judge Van Kauzer pointed out, the county's actually saving money if we were to pay the four sixty-three a day. Now, we wouldn't be paying, paying an acting judge that four sixty-three, it's only for retired judges. It would just be, I believe, it would all be, I think, and then you can't even be an acting judge. You have to be a visiting judge. But that would be Judge Watson, Judge Enlow, Judge Gilletteau, as that, um, for, for us occasionally. Judge Shapiro from Kent or from Akron.
McNulty just came in recently for that latest.
Yeah, Judge McNulty, um, but.
Thank God he dismissed me from the GO case.
I would just, I would ask that the, I would ask if the line item for visiting judges will be increased to, you know, at least twenty-two.
But if we come back to you and say we need to go up to forty because we're paying four sixty-three, you're getting half of it back, yeah. We were just kind of giving a heads up that we're just sorting through that. And this one thing, this part-time seasonal, the six thousand, that was when Bob Bailey, our only outside bailiff, because we only have one now, that was when he had surgery and we had to pay Kevin Thorne to.
I can't seem to find that one.
That's on one, two, three, that's a fourth, that's a third down, top page. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at part-time seasonal, it's three, one, one, three, zero, zero. So, you know, we don't necessarily anticipate that, but.
It's the third item when the personnel matters.
Well, do you have any questions for us?
Usually it's been zero.
I see it, yeah.
But, um, but, but again, we don't think it's reasonable or fair to ask, to ask Nicole or Amanda Casco, one of the girls, to go out and serve papers. You know, Kevin Thorne is a retired deputy, you know, Bob Bailey has a permit. You know, they are, they are qualified to hand, to carry a firearm through the Sheriff's Department. And we don't feel, you know, especially some of these areas where these girls have, you know, where these guys have to go serve in papers. We don't think it's reasonable to ask our staff to go out and serve these papers.
How much are you asking for that?
Well, no, we don't need it, we're just explaining why.
We're explaining why it was.
Why we, there was an extra six thousand dollars.
Sixty-three hundred dollars we spent this year.
That we just paid not spending.
That would, it was not in the budget even last year, right?
Got it.
It wasn't even in the budget.
And then on the fee expense that you spoke of earlier, what amount are you talking about?
Again, we're already.
We're fifteen hundred dollars in the hole, and I just ordered one two days ago. So we're only, we've got, what, another November, December? I mean, I'm assuming before we're done, we're probably going to be three thousand over our.
Again, that's sort of a guesstimate. I, I don't know whether you need to budget twenty thousand dollars for it, but, but I don't think ten is, or twelve even, is, is, um, it just seems to have exploded in the last two years.
We just have to hope, right now Summit Psych is willing to do the six fifty, either six fifty or seven fifty a shot, and normally those are fifteen hundred, so hopefully.
Obviously, we have some, you know, leeway as far as the jurors, the juror fees is, you know, obviously a lot less than what we budget, so there's, really at the end of the year, using that as far as to transfer the cover, that'd be reasonable. Right, alright.
Typically, the visiting judge and the fee expense, I would say, we, if though, if you go over budget, we transfer in.
Right. I, I understand that they'll be, that they'll be paid. We're not talking about, oh, well, too bad.
I mean, the bottom line is.
We're trying, realistically, and so that you guys have a realistic picture as to what you're looking at.
The public has a realistic.
Well, and I'm going to tell you that historically, thinking back, I doubt that Judge Watson took all of her vacation or that Judge Dickinson did. I know John Plow took very little vacation. We're entitled to it, and I'm going to tell you, I'm taking mine. So I think historically, you're probably looking at judges that, you know, didn't, for one reason or another, didn't.
I would think you would need that vacation.
I'll tell you, I can feel myself getting mean.
That isn't as much an issue for me as the reality of the figure. And just to say, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll take care of it, is not indicative of what's being spent then.
Well, and it doesn't give us a good.
You need to know.
It doesn't give you guys a good plan.
So does everybody else, I mean, that's almost like, and reinforces this, well, you squirrel money away, and, and then we have.
It doesn't give you a very good planning tool. It's not realistic, is what my, is what my point is.
We have a fund and we'll take care of it, that aggravates it.
The actual number that we have, actual thirteen, actual fourteen, and so forth, the history of that really tells the actual expenditures that we have. Budgeting for things that are unpredictable is very difficult to do. And so there are many, many lines that we have, like your murder trial.
But it seems, it is an indicative of what's being spent, Kathleen, and I think.
I'm talking about the same thing, I'm talking about.
It may be, but we're sitting here and.
Well, we, look, we just don't want you next year, partway through the year, to say, you know, what are these guys doing? We, we just want to make it clear to you. And, and I think we probably will start, it, it, to me, it makes more sense to just give them the four sixty-three and you guys get it back from, you know, from the state. But in order to do that, we have to have enough money to be able to trigger that.
Now, we, we generally don't use, um, I mean, last week, I was, I was off last week, and I think I used Judge Watson one and a half days. And I used, you know, acting judges.
Yeah, we, we all try to do that.
So, so, you know, it's just that, um, I, I would say, you know, twenty-five thousand dollars would be a more realistic number in that line item is what I'm, is what I would say. Um, and as far as the, the, um, the other line items, I still never figured out the telephone bill around here.
You and everyone else.
But it is what it is.
Well, that and the photocopy thing, that's, that's a mystery too, because Joanne pays that and we have no idea what the, you know, what we, but, hey, it is what it is.
But the, you know, the visiting judge expense and the fee expense were the two real glaring items. Postage is always, you know.
You'd just like it to be a little more representative of what an accident is.
Right.
And, and the fact that we can cover it is immateriality.
Right.
It's kind, we don't want you to be.
Understood.
You know, so.
So, but other than that, I, we just wanted to have the opportunity to see if you guys have any questions or if we can do anything differently to, to answer your questions.
And tell you how much we need Wi-Fi in our court as well.
You need Wi-Fi.
Wi-Fi, the, the, did you hear about the judges coming from the Court of Appeals?
We have a ten million dollar building over there.
We have the newest building in the eleventh district.
Without Wi-Fi.
We were supposed to have Wi-Fi, I kept saying that.
Judge, Judge Rice was just dumbfounded when she went to get on her, her tablet.
And couldn't.
And couldn't, and was told that there's no Wi-Fi.
I argued for that from day one, we did the.
In that brand-new building, and it's like, we see baskets, it was supposed to be.
Well, we thought, we were told it was not, it would be, it was not going to be secure. And we said, we don't care, put it in there, and we never got it.
The Supreme Court used it.
What made you decide to have to put it in? Janet?
No. Well, we, Brian was supposed to do it. We told him that we, we didn't care, put it in, and it never got in. Because there was always, well, we're waiting for this, and we're waiting for that, and the state's going to do this, the state's going to do that.
Servers don't work, you know, I don't know.
There was a dollar.
It's a mess.
No, there wasn't Wi-Fi there.
I didn't, I didn't either.
We need Wi-Fi in this building, we need.
Well, there wasn't any.
But I mean, here we are with the newest courthouse in the whole eleventh district. We're the most backwards one.
They come over, they come over and use our building, uh, instead of the courthouse downtown. They, you know, they travel around, and so they use one of the magistrate's courtroom because it's, you know, good enough size for oral argument, and they really like it. But the last month, there were, there were several of them that were just very.
Surprised.
Surprised that there was no.
So we put that on the list.
So, um, these two line items, were there any others? We have the Wi-Fi question.
Um, well, no, I think, I know the photocopy, we're way over, and as I said, we, I think that's kind of like the telephone. Joanne just pays it, and we don't really know what we're, you know, what we're.
And you've asked Joanne for explanations or?
Well, I, I, I mean, there's a formula, it's like the phone bill, I mean, I, you know, there's supposedly a formula that things are paid or.
We're going to work on that.
And that's neither here nor there, but.
Just wanted to know.
Our, our, our supplies and materials are, um, you know, we're at what, eighty percent? Except for the, uh, photocopy's over actually, but the other two, but the other two items that make up that line item are under, so.
We're being, we're trying to be good servants.
You are.
So, we're trying.
Yeah, I agree, you are.
That's about it.
And we appreciate.
We appreciate your diligence also.
Yeah, we appreciate your effort. And you understand where that fund is, your little sum.
Yes. Okay.
Well, thanks.
Well, thank you, appreciate your time, yeah. All right, you have any questions, Todd, or anything we can be doing or?
Everybody voted?
Oh, yes.
No.
Haven't you really, Maureen?
No, I did not, this morning, I got here, I didn't really, I don't.
Interesting, so what's our, what's our best guess on three, huh? Thinking, oh, my God.
I really called that wrong, I was at a meeting with Justice Pragya last weekend. He said, what do you think? And I said, well, I think it'll pass.
You think it'll what?
You know, that it wouldn't pass. He said, oh, no.
I think it will not pass.
Really?
Yeah.
I don't know, people, you know, we.
We'll find out soon enough.
Our generation doesn't like the whole monopoly. I mean, no matter what, you think the monopoly thing is troubling, I think that's how we all feel. But you know what, I mean, who knows with the eighteen and the twenty-one-year-olds and the thirty-five-year-olds thing?
They're passionate about something, they will get out and vote.
Well, yeah.
If you view the monopoly as okay when it's a casino, I just got to say.
It's okay if I can do what I need to do.
You know, that's just it, I mean, that's what the whole hypocrisy of.
They didn't agree.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just saying, what do we do if that thing passes? I mean, think of all the money that's generated by the diversion program for marijuana and.
Well, we'll still have.
Yeah, we'll see. Why would we have?
We'll still, we'll still have plenty of people.
What happens if both, if both two and three pass, will it be a problem?
Oh, yeah.
It would be, sure.
It'll be years then.
That's what bothers me about issue two, is that, and you have any problem creating a monopoly when they decided that there would be four casinos in the state?
Yeah. Well, but that was, that was their answer to trying to stop three, that was all they had, right?
Yeah, but, but I think the state did it when they had the monopoly for casinos.
Sure.
This is private enterprise paying for this valid issue and getting this on to profit for themselves.
Have you seen the names of people who are on that? I mean, Nick Lachey and, you know, all the Hollywood people, that, that.
No, I haven't.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, yeah. I don't care who's on the list. I know I'm not on the list.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
See you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Todd.
Okay, I got hold of Park District.
Yes.
She can come tomorrow, but she's got to be out of here by ten.
Oh, that's good.
So I did a notice, but it's too late for the paper.
That's all right.
You can call them on the phone, tell them.
Well, they knew someone was coming, but they said it's too late.
Yeah, just so they know where the recorder can come.
I'm wondering, we talked about this at lunch break, is it necessary for Amy to be in here for these hearings? I'm looking over to her, and she's, you know.
Frightened again.
Wasn't she taking notes? I mean, everything is recorded, it just doesn't seem.
Usually we just put a little blur.
Right, right.
Every year we have, but if you want me to transcript it, I will.
Oh, I, oh, no. That would be.
We have it on the recording, so if we need it, we're now.
So I would think she could have other things to do, that's.
Yes.
So that's fine.
Okay. Does he want anybody to come to this meeting tomorrow?
I'm sorry?
Chris Prayproff is the only one.
What time is she coming?
Nine thirty.
Nine thirty.
Okay.
Is there a motion for journal entries?
Uh, yes, so moved.
Second.
All in favor, if you can say aye. Aye? Is there anything else?
Would you just please add your agenda? Oh, no, wait, I've got the wrong thing, yeah, I'm sorry.
I didn't see it.
No, it's, no, it's not today, I have no idea where I got this, Kathleen.
Did you want anybody else to come into this Park District? No, Mickey.
No.
Okay. And Janet Kovick said she's got a third of a box, a paper box full of applicants.
We'll use those up and then we'll, next printing, we leave off the box.
All right, nothing else, that's it? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved. Second, all in favor?
I mean, aye.
We want to adjourn.